Oh, okay, we should be recording. She didn't talk, but she's on.
Okay, I just want to let everybody know that I have my phone sound turned off, but I have to have the phone on in order to read my agenda and my packet because I don't have my other computers, so I can't be looking at them simultaneously. So this is just going to have the agenda on it.
Okay.
That's what I do with my iPad as well.
Yeah, so, because, yeah, I'm using it for my, it's really tiny, but there it is.
It's a long one.
Okay, and Dan Keating mentioned to me that he is going to be coming a little bit late. He had a family event, and so it might, might run over a little bit. Just wanted to let everybody know. But we have everybody else here. So we have a court, so I make a motion that we open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is there anybody who has any conflict of interest this evening or anything they'd like to disclose?
Lanfear, I do not.
Trustee Lightgeb, I just wanted to mention that I did speak with one employee regarding a personal matter related to the vaccine policy. However, this does not affect my public decision, part of which I've stated previously. So I do not believe that represents a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I, I believe we all spoke with the same employee, and I don't believe that's a conflict of interest. I think that's doing our due diligence when we put together a, a policy.
Thank you. I did not speak to anyone regarding the.
Alright Lily, didn't mean to throw you in that group.
That's okay.
I know three of us.
Oh, I'd also spoke with the, an employee about the policy, and we also have received correspondence as well. But it is, I do not see that as in any way, shape, or form a conflict of interest, and it's important we hear everybody's opinions.
That's true. I, I did receive the correspondence. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, Dorothea, did you want to?
Real quick, I just want to make a sound check with everybody to make sure attendees can hear. And if they post that in the Q and A, that would be terrific.
And did you want to speak to, you know, just the, the chat and just how we're working with everything?
Sure, um, we.
Back in it again, so.
We have engaged the chat functions. I'm hoping everybody can chat amongst each other. We double-checked the settings, so I think it's working. This was at the request of some of the members of the public. We expect courtesy and proper decorum at all times discussion proof, and the discussion should be pertaining to the agenda items for tonight's meeting. Final reminder that the board members independent cannot chat independently with a resident is it is a violation of the open meetings law. The board will only answer questions posted in the Q and A, so please provide your name and address, and we'll go from there. And also raise your hand during any agenda item, and I will cue you to speak to the board.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Let's start with department reports. The building inspector. Hi, Steve.
Hi. Any questions on the report?
Yep, Justin?
Um, yes, I, I noticed that, and I appreciate the fact that we seem to be catching up with issuing violations for things that are not in conformance with our code. I did notice in particular that there was a mention of a house behind the Pittsburgh Dairy that was cited. And I was just wondering, given that there seemed to be a few prominent properties that are in need of repair in the village, I was just wondering what the thought process was behind selecting that one to issue violations or to pursue.
I, it's one of the longest-standing ones, Justin. I have, I have gone after kind of the things that are, are the longest, just like I went after the barn on State Street, and he has, he's done a little bit, you know, I mean, he started repairing. And, and I typically will approach everybody and give them an opportunity to repair or, or start a process. I have approached the dairy many times in regards to, and I was promised that things would, would happen. It has not happened, so it got to the point where I, I feel like it's beyond the point of reasonableness. So I felt like I had to start a process to start a timeline to see if we could get something done there.
Sure, that, that certainly seems reasonable to me, and I, I appreciate the, the consistency and following up with enforcement. I was just wondering if, since we're doing this, we could also start looking at some other prominent properties, including the Barnes and Shane Place and 19 North Main Street next to Village Hall. Has there been any effort or outreach to, related to those properties?
Uh, nothing to the Barnes, Justin, but 19, I have talked to the fire department numerous times in regards to the, the property next door, trying to find out what they were going to do with it. It's, it's a very touchy situation given that is the fire department. You know, I'm, I'm hesitant unless the board would direct me to, I'm hesitant to issue a violation on a house because I do not want to create a bad relationship between us and the fire department. And there have been several people who talked or trying to talk to them in regards to buying that property. I believe that property should be split, and then the house sold off for somebody to use, either as an office or, or a home or whatever. But it's really up to the board as to far as where or what pressure goes in regards in. Like I said, I've always been kind of, you know, a little bit delicate with that one, but as far as the Barnes in, down in 50 State Street, if, um, I mean, if that's the board wishes, there keep was rumors of projects that's supposed to happen there that don't seem to, to come to fruition. So I certainly can reach out to the owners of the barn and start my process by, you know, reaching out first, see if we can get some things started and done, and if that doesn't work, I'll, I'll follow through with the formal process.
Um, if I can, can I, if I can speak to the Barnes, actually, we did have TY Lynn go through the Barnes. Lily, you can correct me, maybe it was like three, four years ago. We did have numerous violations. We have requested TY Lynn at one point to go back in and do an inspection again. The owners refused, and everything kind of stalled out. We were between building inspectors, and it's been kind of a limbo situation that does need to be addressed, but it has been looked at in the past.
All right, I was unaware of that, so, yeah, thank you.
And I can provide you all the records, Steve.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that makes sense, Steve, to, you know, to see really what's been done and looked at in the past by, with that report. And then, you know, I think that's a good recommendation that you would follow up and, and talk to the owners and see where they are with all of this. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if I may.
Justin, yeah.
I, I agree, and, and again, I really appreciate following up on some of these issues, which I know are complicated. But I, I think that there is a really a need for consistency as, as we're starting to approach some of these issues. And, and I think that it's a very reasonable next step to get up to date on the, the previous violations related to the Barnes. I'm fully in support of that. I, I would also like to, as a, as an individual board member, I would like to see further action taken with respect to 19 North Main. And unless there are other objections from the board, you know, if there are reasons that we should not do that, I understand the relationship is sensitive. But sometimes people don't make decisions if they're, they're allowed to have a reasonable alternative that doesn't really have much cost, you know, with whistling just sitting there. And I think that we should do our due diligence and, and following up on that and being.
You know, I think that's really a great idea, and Justin, I, I would put this out that what, you know, we have somebody from the board maybe reach out really to the fire department, and I would recommend you, you know, I think you're, you're interested in that, and you brought this up before the board. So my recommendation would be, would have be to ask you to follow up on that. I think that's great.
I, I appreciate the recommendation. I would like to, I, I will, I, I see that trustee Stetser has her hand up.
Is it owned by the fire district? I've never quite understood who owns it. It's owned by the, the fire district, the Pittsburgh Fire District.
Right.
Okay, and they were going to use it for, they use the back parts, correct? The barn, the carriage house, and.
Yes, that building is not at, at the issue per se.
Right, it's the one in the front, and there was some asbestos removal or something, or lead.
They did that, um, what, three, three years ago, maybe now four? Maybe longer than that. Yeah.
Okay, and so, and nothing since then, whoops, I dropped my pen, sorry. Nothing since then has, has happened on that, that front property?
Okay.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
I have no problem. I, I will reach out to the fire department.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that, but you know, I mean, I think if you want a board member to, to help with that, I think that's, that's a great idea, and.
Well, what I'll, what I'll say, you know, I mean, in, in the conversation, it was brought up at a trustees' meeting, and I was asked to address the issue. So they understand that it's not just me, but the board and the villages is looking at it, wanting something to happen with the property.
A status update, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a good relationship with Bob Bockett, and who is the supervisor over there, so I, I will reach out to Bob, and, and like I said, I've been trying, I've done him kind of a few favors, so we're on a good page. I'd like to keep it, so I will, I will process it, you know, gently as I can. You know, we got 23 to, to step up and fix his property and the house, and it, you know, and you're right, Justin, that, that is a very prominent location, and it's, I've had so many people ask me, uh, what are you doing with that house? What are you doing with that house? So it is time to, to start pressing.
Yeah, no, I think that, that, that's, that's great. Thanks, Steve. And Lily, yes, you have your hand up? Do you have your hand up, Lily?
Yes, I do. I thank you for recognizing me. We also should have, I believe, a liaison, a trustee liaison to the fire department.
And that actually, that was Renee, but for this year, it was, it's Justin, so that's why I was.
Okay, but that would, okay, it probably would also. Be excellent for a second person to be present.
Yep.
I, I appreciate that. I, I would be happy to, to be president's liaison. I think that perhaps just in terms of consistency, and, and since Steve is the code enforcement officer, I think that just the, the first round of questions could come from him, and then I'd be happy to consider that and, and follow up as necessary. I, I really appreciate the discussion on this. I know there are some difficult issues. And I, I would like to just make a motion, since it does seem like we're on the same page here, and just to, to make sure that everyone is, is clear about the action items. I'd like to make a motion that the building inspector follows up with the, the Barnes in, in Shane Place, as we discussed, by, by researching the, the existing violations, and also asking questions regarding 19 North Main.
I guess if you think you need a motion, okay, I'm not, okay.
Okay, I will second that, and then we can discuss it. Trustee Lanfear, I second.
My question was whether we needed a motion for this.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that we, we, we do. Yes, Dorothea, I'm sorry, you, you you're, you're on mute, Dorothea. Dorothea, you're on mute.
Got it. If you're making a motion second, there is some members of the public want to speak to the Barnes, and I think you want to hear that before you actually resolve the issue.
Okay, no.
Um, the first one is Dave Ferris. I believe you're 29 Monroe, Dave, and if I'm wrong, I apologize. I suggest you talk to Commissioner, Commissioner Kelly Klein, who I believe is in the fire department. Member looking into the building matter. And then we have John Limbeck, who wishes to speak, and it looks like Mr. Ferris wants to speak as well, so allow John to speak. John, you should be able to speak.
He's still muted. Oh, there he is.
Good evening. John Limbeck, 62 State Street. For what it's worth, during my tenure with the village, we had worked out an agreement with Roger Powers and his wife where we were going to do a five-year renovation of the entire barn property. He had gotten that approved through the Architectural Review Board at the time, and the Board of Trustees also approved that. I don't know if that paperwork's still available. His last action was to have had that filed with the Monroe County Clerk's Office, and then there was a lawsuit filed between, it was filed by the Corbies against the Powers and Rogers, Roger Powers pulled out of the deal at that time. But again, there was quite a bit of documentation at that time as to what they were going to do to the Barnes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So maybe that's something we can look at in the records and revisit that, that, thanks for that, John. That's helpful. Appreciate that.
I have all that too, and I believe Jeff does as well.
Okay, great. Anything else, Dorothea? I didn't want to.
That's all I have at this time.
Okay, great. Alrighty, so there was a motion with a second. Any further discussion here? Okay, call vote.
Uh, trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear? Uh-oh.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, anything else, Steve, on your report or anything to be added?
Um, I don't think so. We got, you know, I know I sent an email about the arboretum, but I believe that'll come up in, you know, I mean, in a separate issue.
Sure.
Obviously, the, the vaccine issue will come up in a separate issue.
Right, they are, they are on the agenda tonight, so we, we can address it at that time. Thank you. Thanks for that report. Okay, next up, DP. Oh, I'm sorry, Justin, I didn't see that.
May I just confirm if, if the building inspector is going to be around for the discussion on the arboretum? Because I think that's, especially since you did visit it today and sent us follow-up emails, it's important to have him as part of the discussion.
Yes, I think everybody's going to be around for that. Yes, including the superintendent of the DPW as well, so all hands on deck. You bet. Okay, so, next up, the DPW report, please.
Hi, everybody.
Isaac.
Isaac.
Hi. Anybody have any questions?
There's a lot going on.
A lot going on.
I know. Um, I do want to talk about the, and maybe you can speak, just so members of the public also understand that the, the lights out on the State Street Bridge and where we are, and sort of the circular bit of the process I know that you've been going through with this.
Yeah, so the lights have not been reconnected by RG&E, and that is, uh, that was supposed to be done at the completion of the State Street Bridge project. I have been in contact with the engineer in charge for the project, and he's been reaching out to RG&E to try to push to get RG&E to reconnect the lights. I believe the engineer at RG&E was on vacation through the beginning of this week, and he should be back at this point, so hopefully we'll be hearing something from him, so. Man, get those lights back.
So have we actually made contact with the engineer after he returned from vacation?
Uh, the engineer from RG&E, I have not been in contact with him. I don't know if the engineer from the New York State Department of Transportation.
Okay, so I'd like that to be an action item. Let's follow up first thing tomorrow and see kind of where we are, because I know, nice dot, just for, so the public understands. You know, RG&E obviously disconnected lights when the bridge was under repair. Lights came back on, and for a strange reason, they all went back off. So clearly something happened, you know, with how it was reconnected. So there's been a little bit of back and forth between Nice Dot and RG&E, and who's handling what. And so we're really trying to get to the bottom of it. I also would just like to say, I, I've asked Zach, and we're talking about looking into solar lights, maybe some downlights, small downlights to light up our bridges if the, if power does go out. And so we're kind of working on that. We don't really have anything to report, but I just wanted to kind of give you all a heads up. I'm very interested in looking at other solar options in addition to how we have lighting in our village. I think it's an important step for us, particularly with power outages. So the other aspect, and Zach, maybe you can speak to this, about putting something on the bridge and what it takes to actually have us install something.
Uh, yeah, the DOT does not like anything installed on a bridge, much less the wall-packed light fixture mounted to the concrete abutment under the bridge. So getting anything that would penetrate any of the steel structure of the bridge would be next to impossible with the DOT. I don't think it would ever get permit for that. So one idea that we are exploring right now is taking some of those downlights and mounting magnets to them and seeing if we can't find a good location to mount them on the bridge structure that does not have any penetration through the structure of steel. Once we can kind of get an idea of what we're working with for lighting, then we will approach the DOT and see how they feel about that. And hopefully they're open to the idea, especially since it's not really doing anything to the structure of the bridge.
Yeah, we're trying to be creative when we look at some of these options, because as you can, as you just heard from Zach, we're, we're a bit limited on that. Dorothea, did you have something? Oh, I thought I saw your hand.
Nope, nothing from the public this time.
Okay, great, okay. Uh, yes, Renee?
Um, the, can you tell us more? It sounds like we're getting an extra radar sign, speed radar sign, possibly?
Possibly. I, I'm talking to the sign guy over the town. They have a few of the solar-powered radar signs throughout the town. And he's got a contact that offered them a pretty good deal on theirs, so if I could get the same deal, which should be about right around half of what I was quoted for the solar-powered sign that I was looking at, maybe able to get two permanently placed solar-powered radar feedback signs rather than one.
Great. I did see that they deployed, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Um, they, it looks like they deployed two new ones that I haven't seen before, because when you drive the speed limit, there was one on near Mendon High School, and then one on Sunset Boulevard, and I think they're on trailers, so they're mobile, but they, they give you a little smiley face when you drive the speed limit.
Yeah, funny enough, DOT doesn't like that.
They don't like the smiley face or the trailer part?
Or, or don't they like to smile?
Oh, come on, they never got stickers growing up.
Um, so, yeah, they've, they've got a few. They got a solar-powered, permanently-placed radar feedback sign on East Ave. They've got one on Mitchell and one on French. Um, and the mounting hardware, the poles, it's all DOT compliant, so it's up to, to the standard. So if we did decide to put one on a state road, we'd be covered there. So it's, it's a, it's a decent package, and it works how they intended to. They're not really collecting data off of theirs, but it does have the option to be able to do so if we, you know, monitor. So once I'm able to get in contact with the contact that they have, then I'll start the talks, and hopefully we can work something out.
Groovy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any, any other questions for Zach at the moment? Okay, Zach, you, thank you so much, Zach, for the report. Yeah.
I do have, I do have one thing.
Wait, there's more?
Yep, sorry.
Okay.
Um, for this weekend's event with the town, the Pittsburgh crew will be doing a scrimmage, you know, leave from 10 till 2. And they have asked if they could set up their medic station, a DPW shop. It's not going to be quite to the same extent as their fall and spring regard is, but, um, they are just looking to set up in the parking lot in front of our garage. So I gave them permission to do so as long as you don't block garage doors in case there's an emergency here and we have to get out. So they'll be here for a few hours Saturday during the spring.
And, and that's traditionally been where they set up in the past.
Yeah, usually we use our, our entire facility, they'll set up in our break room, but this time they're not looking for access to the inside of the building, it's just the outside.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Well then, thank you. Uh, next up, well, let's see, the village attorney is in here. Treasurers report.
Um.
Oh, yes, excuse me, Steve, I, I see your hand.
Yeah, I, I apologize, but there are two things that I, I forgot about. One thing being, and I approached Renee about signage on the canal pass for the bikes. We need stand-up signs at each end so that people see them. The painted signs on the ground, a lot of people claim they don't see them. I'm, I'm requesting or asking for safety that we put a stand-up sign at each end of where they're supposed to depart the bike. You can make a two-sided sign, enjoy your ride, and on the other side says, please walk the bike from here till, till the, the other sign, or however you want to word it. All right, it, I've watched people buzz children in carriages, and, and I've had two more people in the last two weeks basically tell me, you know, have a nice day, or in not-so-nice words, and drive right by them. And I don't have any authority to stop or do anything, but at least if we have signage a little more, maybe, maybe it'll stop a few of them.
Yeah, and Zach.
That's a great idea. Yeah, sorry, Renee, go right ahead, yep.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor Plummer. When Zach refreshed the paint there, we were hoping that would be enough when we put the, the new walk the, or walk your bike right there. And we were hoping that would do the trick, so we need to get out. Zach, I can't remember, it was going to be tricky to put it in a place that gets noticed without it being a hazard, so I don't know if, if you know off the top of your head. We will have to order signs as well.
Yeah, we can put as many signs up as you guys would like to see out there. Hopefully it has some effect. But if, if, if we do it out of the rand, we can do it on the west end where the path lies to either go above to the road or underneath the bridge, just like Steve said, one side, enjoy your ride, or the other side as you're coming into Shane Place to walk your bike. The other end, we could probably post something on the, the east pavilion, one of the, the posts there. Otherwise, there isn't really a whole lot of place, places to mount another post with a sign on it. We can take a look at it, see if there are better options, but that would probably be the best that on the east end. So you come underneath the State Street Bridge, you come up the, the slight incline to the pavilion, and then we could just post something on, on one of the posts.
Yeah, Lily?
Zach, do you remember there used to be a gate that kid, that went across the, the path? And I'm, I'm pretty sure up by the parking lot for the wine bar. And it, there was a hole in, in the asphalt for a stanchion, which might have been paved over, but do you remember that? Do you recall that? And we did have a sign on that at one time, walk your bike.
That was paved over, then we.
Okay.
The yield signs, similar to, to what the yield signs were, and we bolted it down to the path right by the entrance going into that parking lot by the, by the wine store. Um, and then that was just done away with for whatever reason. It's never, it just never went back out. That was years ago.
Okay.
Not to say that we can't put something like that back out there, but that's just something else in the way. That probably will be disregarded. I mean, I'm, you know, the last time I was down there painting those signs on the path, I'm having kids drive past me through the wet paint as I'm painting. They're either, they either care or they don't care. They're either going to get off their bike and walk it, or they're. But we could, we could also probably, you know, put like a washboard in there, so people hate riding the bike through the path, but, um, we can try anything you guys want.
I, I also want to raise another point, because you, you actually brought this up. A huge aspect of where the bikers go is they'll come down off, down the path off the north, North Main Street and, and then come up to that parking lot for, you know, the, the wine store and the wine bar. And then they drive through that parking lot, and I met with the owner of the wine bar, and he's concerned somebody's going to be hit on a bike zipping through that parking lot with a car pulling out. Granted, it's a private parking lot, but maybe some other signage at the base there. You know, or when you come up to that parking lot, you know, that there's a caution there, you know, it's an active parking lot with cars moving in and out.
Yeah, that one's a little tricky, because where you're supposed to take your, your bike is counterintuitive. It's like hidden. And this little, it was, it's not, like, even if we paint and put directions, people, if you're on a bike, you're still going to go to the driveway. It only makes sense. So we need to get out there and maybe scope it out.
Something up and go look at that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, maybe we can circle back.
For that secondary issue, and then the other one, do we need to, like, get out there and look at it and then bring it back to the board? Or is this something that won't be too expensive that we don't need to bring it back to the board? If we come up with, we need two signs, we're thinking for the, you know, bikes go this way to take them to the Bike Boulevard in those two locations, and probably a sign post and one that's by the parking lot. Do we need to scope it out and then bring it back to the, to the board for approval?
You, you might wish to do that, but it's, if it's under a thousand, I think the clerk can authorize.
I meant for the aesthetics. I was assuming it was going to be under a thousand, but maybe I'm being naive. I meant the aesthetics of it.
That'd be a heck of a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I'm guessing it's going to be about 300 bucks for each, right? Because that's what a stop sign is, around 300. But we'll have to get something custom made.
Yeah, well, we, we can, we could, yeah, Zach, go ahead.
I, I could talk to the sign guy over the town, see if he's willing to help us out and we could save some money there.
You have a sign guy?
There's, they have a, well, the whole department, they have a stop and everything. It's really nice. But to find the specific wording that we're looking for is probably, the, the sign doesn't exist, we're going to have to make it so. I can talk to Nick over the town, see if he's willing to help us out.
I think we can run with this and make this happen. It's a public safety issue. Steve, thanks for bringing this up, and I think everybody's got good ideas and let's make it happen.
Yep, the last thing, the last thing I just want to mention, I was a little disappointed in the fact that they're doing their music fest and closing off the streets this weekend. And I wasn't told anything about it by the town. All right, luckily Kelly reached out to me and said, you're coming Saturday and spec, right? And I, of course, I'm going to because it is my job. But I had plans this weekend and had no knowledge of it. So I, you know, I'm going to do it because it, it's necessary, but I was a little taken aback to find out on, you know, yesterday that I had a responsibility coming up this weekend that nobody informed me of.
I know it was in the original application from the town that we, we all reviewed that was in our packet. What was that? Was it? It wasn't last, it was a meeting before last?
It may have been one of the times when I was gone, so.
Oh, you could have been out on vacation. I'm surprised the town didn't reach out though.
Well, so am I. That, that's all I'm saying. You know, I mean, it's like I said, a huge deal, I'm going to, I'll take care of it, but I just was a little taken aback that I wasn't notified much earlier.
Steve, is that our misstep or is it something that we need to make sure the town notifies you about? How, how do you?
Should have notified and sent me plans and site.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that, that's on the town.
Yeah, I'm the fire marshal. So I mean, Kelly, Kelly wants no part of it. So I should have looked, had a look at it to approve the locations. And I mean, they got kids rides and stuff too. There are kids rides, Dorothea. There is some.
That's not, that was not in their application.
It wasn't in there.
No, there's a slide and there's some other, I forget the word, it's the ride that Kelly said, but it's on her plan sheet for the event.
Did she give you the plan sheet? Do we now have copies of it?
I will make sure I get a copy of it.
Wow. Okay, that's, that's a discussion. Yes, Zach.
Uh, just curious, is the regatta listed on that also? I think that was a.
It's a scrimmage, not a regatta.
Or, I'm sorry, the cruise scrimmage. I don't know if it's necessary to, to be part of that. I was just curious.
No, the, the regatta, the people with the regatta, they file for their own non municipals for approval to hold their events. That's not through the town. And I don't believe we received anything.
I've been told that, we have to be clear, it's a scrimmage, not a regatta.
Scrimmage.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I, boy, I'm sorry that happened with the town. What I'll do is my next meeting with the supervisor, I'll follow up with him as well. Okay, because that, that really should have happened. Yeah. Okey doke. Uh, let's see, where are we here? What time, what time do we have? I'm just checking. Okay.
7:05.
7:05, okay. Treasurer's report, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Brooklyn.
Hello. Treasury report, this should be our last larger treasury report, seeing how we're going back to bi monthly meetings. We typically don't have almost 50 vouchers in one report. So um, this one's a little bit larger than we're used to, but um, it is pretty standard. There were quite a few updates that came in today. Like I always say, with, with us having the one meeting, I try to get everything bill paid so we avoid late fees and penalties from companies. So if there's any questions, I can answer them about the bill pay.
Yes, Justin?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Brooklyn. My, my only question is regarding an item that I think came in very late today. I don't know if it was 5:41 in, in that batch, but there, there seems to be some items at the end related to Osborne Reed and Burke charges. And I, I don't think that I saw those before. Correct me if, if they were there. But I would like to see those itemized since they were such a late item and I didn't get a chance to, to ask any questions about those.
That is no problem. I actually will send those out to the board in the morning. With Mary having limited availability in office, that was something I wanted to do with her. There were a few items on there that we were billed for once and twice on there. So I just wanted to make sure that everything that was paid was supposed to be paid, but I can definitely get that sent out to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Brooklyn? Yes, Lily?
Thank you. I did not, speaking of the Osborne Reed, I did not receive an email with the invoices from the attorneys to review this month until I saw the Osborne Reed online on Bill Pay.
Right, this is, this is the only one on there and we had a bill pay that was previously paid that I had credit for. So Mary and I sat down together and went through each payment to make sure that nothing was being double billed. We're billed by Osborne kind of in an awkward way, depending on when we have a meeting or when they do some service for us. So we are constantly getting bills sent from Osborne throughout the week and month.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Brooklyn? Brooklyn, thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay. All right, next up.
Um, we, are we getting approval to actually pay those?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved. Oh, I think we're not including 183, that, that last, it's everything but those Osborne.
The last one that came through? Okay, the motion is amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Oh, let's see. Minutes?
Sure, we can go there. I'd like the board to know we are current with our meetings up to our ninth workshop meeting. So there you go.
Thank you. Trustee Lanfear, the July 13th minutes, which I believe are the first ones in the packet. I, I was not present.
Did I have you?
Yes.
Oh, see Lily, I never want anybody to be gone. I will remove you. I apologize.
Lily, you were there in spirit.
Yes, I was.
Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I, I already submitted some feedback to Dorothea prior to the meeting. Just wanted to check to see if there's an issue with any of those comments.
No, I did not see a problem with any of your comments. I received feedback as well from trustee Stetser, a minor correction. Actually, I think you both got, possibly got one of them the same. But I really do appreciate receiving these corrections. I have no problems with those changes. They're very minor and will be corrected.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions regarding minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the, with the corrections that were submitted?
We'll handle those.
Yeah, do we have to do each one?
We have to do each.
I know, you're right.
Sorry, I know, I wish we could do one.
Go through the, please go through the, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of July 13th.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Roll call. Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear? Oh, you weren't there. I still want you there.
Trying to tell you.
Lady, come on.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Okay. All right, the regular meeting of August 10th, I can have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Yay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Okay, village board special meeting, August 26th. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Lanfear, second.
Okay, trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to keep you guys on your toes. Village Board Special Meeting, August 30th, this was our workshop. If I can have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll get these posted up on the website once corrections are done, so I anticipate before the end of the week.
Okay, um, oh, Jeff, hi Jeff. Alrighty, uh, do we want to go to the clerk's report?
Sure. Let me get back, get my cheat sheets. Okay, the first thing I had was the guidelines for public comment. As I indicated, I kind of took both policies as the board kind of stated, tried to take the key things they wanted from the town. Some of the things the board indicated they're okay with keeping in our policy. So, you know, obviously it's up to you if you see changes. Jeff did recommend one minor change, which I included when I sent out the packet, and that was with the first comment. So again, these are your guidelines, so I'm just the typist.
Uh, yes, Justin?
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate the, the starting point on the public comment guidelines, Dorothea. Personally, I, I feel like the guidelines as initially proposed, and I, I think there were some revisions again sent later than five o'clock this evening that I didn't get a chance to review yet. To me, the initial round that was sent really did not represent what we spoke about in our public meeting the other day. And I think that it would be a pretty lengthy discussion as far as the points that I have, at least if we were to push that forward tonight. So my suggestion would be to table that and move on to other items and apply some further revisions based on our, our previous meeting and, and move forward accordingly at the next meeting.
Is there any other thought on that from the board? Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I agree with what Justin has stated. And one of the things specifically that I noted was that previously we had a three minute window for comments and it was changed to two minutes. So that is one point specifically I, I wish to address. And I think that I, my understanding was that where we left it at the end of the last meeting, when we discussed it, was that we seemed, there seemed to be a consensus regarding the format that the town was utilizing and that we could emulate that, especially because we're smaller and it didn't, I didn't think that the trustees had significant issues with, with that suggestion. So I would like to put that out there once again. I don't think it needs to be complicated. I think it's pretty clear that we all want to engage our residents and it's primarily all of our thought processes are lined up in that regard. So yes, I, I would agree with what Justin is saying so that we can come up with a complete guideline that we have, which we can all agree and we move this along.
Yeah, to be clear, um, we, we discussed it at great length in our public workshop, which is why we had that. And my understanding, Dorothea, and you can speak to this, Renee, I see your hand is up as well, is that you, you took these guidelines directly from the town? Am I correct?
Yes, I took portions from the town. There were some things in there that really didn't apply and where we don't allow outside members of the village to talk, the board does, and I didn't think we wanted to limit participation by zip code or address. Really, it, the only, and as we did start talk, we did want the speakers to step to the front of the room. You know, I really mimicked a lot of what they said. There's nothing in here really restricting anybody. I put in that they can speak after each agenda item. And also that we can have also on general manners at the end of the meeting. That was in the town policy. So I apologize if I'm not giving you what you want. It's just maybe a little formatted with dots. I'm not sure where I'm going wrong. I mean, if you want the paragraphs, I can, I can take their guy, pop, pop thing and change the names. I mean, you know, I really thought some of these things you did want, you wanted, I did request that we keep that they must use accepted rules of courtesy and decorum and dignity. I think that's only fair. You know, I'm, this was me putting it together with the anticipation of what we had talked about. So if there's something in there that's offensive to someone, that was not my intent. I don't think it limits people in any shape or form. But again, they're your guidelines, so you know, cross off what you want to cross off.
And the two minutes to three minutes is pretty easy to solve, I think, you know? And, and thank you for bringing that up, Lily. I, I think the town has two minutes, so I think that's why it just ended up in there for no other reason than that, because that was at the direction of the board to look at what the town does and just simply carry it over for the village, which we all thought was a great idea. Renee, you had your hand up.
Uh, that's all I was going to point out. We were, we had landed on three minutes, but then we also told Dorothea to, that, I mean, with, based on public comments, we got some great participation and we said, the town's policy looked great. The town's policy does have two minutes, so we, that, that's our fault for not clarifying with, with Dorothea that we had agreed to the three minute. And I think we had agreed to the three minute.
And at the end of the day, I'm sorry, keep, I finish up, please, Renee, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Now, I was just going to say, at the end of the day, it's solvable. Okay, three minutes, we all love that. I mean, I think that's great. I'm not really quite sure, you know, we, we did a pretty deep dive in our workshop, so I'm not sure where we're going with this. This is something that the board has agreed to regarding adopting, you know, what the town uses. I love the idea and I believe it was, I think it was Dave Ferris brought it up, that, that it's really consistent whether you're at sort of a town or a village meeting, you kind of know the drill, and I think that's kind of a great thing. Yes, Renee?
The other thing, and sorry, my dog's whining behind me, but the thing, the recommended that the speakers may, may register with the clerk prior to the meeting, I don't think we had agreement on that one. That one was one that we didn't discuss that was in the initial, you know, outline that Dorothea provided for us. So maybe there are a few, I don't know if, Justin, if you have a lot of these, but we could crank them out and, and get some clarification, but that's one that we didn't discuss that is in the list and we didn't get good clarity on that.
Well, why don't we talk about it now? Because I'd like us to move forward. I mean, you know, we, we spent a tremendous amount of time in a workshop and really got some great public feedback. And here we are now, and I think it's important that our board does take action and we resolve now, not two minutes, we want three and, and whatever else. Yes, Justin, did you have your hand up?
Um, no, but since you, you mentioned it, I, I think there were some comments from the public that came in and I wondered if we could read those on, on this matter.
Uh, hold on. Actually, I have nothing in the Q and A.
Yeah, the comments are directed through the question and answer to Dorothea, to the village clerk, so.
There, there was also an email that I believe we received.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know if we received an email. Hang on.
Hold on. I only had two emails prior to the meeting.
Yeah, and they were on different agenda items.
I do not have an email on public speaking. Let me check my email right now, but I have not received anything.
I think the subject is marijuana law and there was a comment related to public speaking underneath that that I was referring to.
Oh, I wouldn't have recognized it as public speaking.
Oh, geez, I, I could have been more clear.
No, I, it just.
I think it came in from Dave Ferris. Excuse me for jumping in.
I'm looking at Dave Ferris's right now.
Because I read it right.
Oh, I thought it was pertaining to the marijuana law. I didn't realize he added something else in.
Yeah, there was, there were two things in it.
Oh, okay, great.
And I think it's in the chat also.
Hold on. Let me go to the chat. I'll queue that and then I'll try to find in Mr. Ferris's letter where it's related.
I think it was relating, Dorothea, to the discussion we had regarding letters coming in to the clerk and to village hall and how they were being handled as far as the minutes and being read into the record.
Um. So I think that was the que, I think that was the question and that, and the discussion that we were still, um, determining how, how that would be handled. Unless you had already determined our policy on that.
And I think we said we were going to attach them.
They're gonna be attached, be attached and read.
So we do, we're saying the, we want that added to, I don't remember who brought this up, but do we need to add that into the, the guidelines here?
Um, yes, that was, that was one of the, the points that I had raised.
Okay, so let's do that. Yep, let's do that.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing in Mr. Ferris's comments. The only thing I can possibly mount to possibly public comment is the British trustee should not put non-residents' perceptions of Pittsburgh ahead of listening to the residents, who are persons of the Board of Trustees is supposed to serve. The board believes in communication with the village residents, let the board villagers speak with a referendum. I think that relates to marijuana law. I am not, right, I do not see.
Um, Dorothea, it's in the chat.
Oh, I'm not looking at chat.
Okay.
We discussed that I'm not looking at chat. That's too much to ask me to watch on the screen.
So if you want to make comments, you should put them in the. Comments should be directed through the Q and A directly to the village clerk. And again, the trustees should not be engaging with the chat with residents because this is a violation of the open meetings law. Jeff, am I correct in that?
You are correct.
And that was, that was noted by our village clerk at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, to not engage, it doesn't mean we can't, can, are we not supposed to have that window open at all?
Right. The, the idea is, is to, to focus any questions relating to agenda items directed to the village clerk, just as the town does. That's what the town does. And the chat goes on with people attending the meeting, um, because they have asked for that. So, um, this is about, you know, we can't ask the village clerk to keep running around. Is it a chat? Is it, if you have a question about an agenda item, please, I'm asking the public to direct it to the village clerk through the question and answer. And please give your name and address when you do so. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so, to get back to this, let me, Art Pierce is requesting to speak to the board, so I'm going to allow him to speak. And then we'll move down the list. I have seven comments coming in, so hold on. Mr. Pierce, you've been allowed to speak.
I think he's muted.
He should be able to speak.
He's muted. I can see that he's muted.
Yeah, that's on, on his end. I can't.
Yeah. Do you want to go to comments, maybe while he figures it out?
Okay. Next would be.
Just unmuted, I'm sorry.
Mr. Pierce, can you? Hello?
Oh, his hand's up.
Okay, I'll move on to Mr. Ferris. He is asking to speak as well. Mr. Ferris, you should be unable to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I did.
I'll be very brief. Just two changes. The one I would say is that letters be read and also attached to the minutes. And I would put the same time limit on the reading of a letter as I would a speaker. It's, it's just another form of communication. So a long letter, three minutes, and you cut it off and you attach it. And the other item is the last item, not handing out printed materials. I don't think is, uh, correct, free speech and First Amendment. And somebody may have something valid if they're giving it to the board. I don't understand why they can't give it to the public. It might be factual, informational. Uh, there was no reason to limit that. I'm not talking posters or protest banners or things. I'm talking information given to the board to give to the audience as well. Should be no restriction.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for your comments. Yep. Any other comment? Dorothea?
Um, that was a policy the board put in a long time ago to not to allow handouts just because it could be distracting and, and other issues that arise from allowing that to happen, but that is a board decision.
That, that has been in place, I think, for years, actually.
Yes.
As I recall, I mean, for a long time. Um, maybe, maybe Jeff, if you could speak to, um, the distribution in a public meeting of material that's, that perhaps the board has not seen to the attend, meeting attendees, because right now, I, for years, there's been a policy that you couldn't just come in and just start distributing material.
Uh, I think the concept there is that the Board of Trustees' meeting should not be a forum for, uh, the espousement of anyone's particular beliefs, purposes. Um, to have the Board of Trustees' position at trustees' meetings. But it sounds like, um, we are moving away from that concept to a much more wide-open, um, say what you want, uh, provided it pertains to an agenda item. So I guess if you limited it to the, the distribution to agenda items, um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure where you draw the line. I mean, at, at a virtual meeting, are you gonna put it, you're gonna share your screen and put whatever somebody wants up on the screen? I, I suppose you could do that. Um, but, but the genesis of that policy was so that the Board of Trustees would control what goes on at Board of Trustees' meetings.
And they would, people can submit letters and information directly to the board. I mean.
Correct.
I, I, I guess that's, I guess that's what was behind the policy. Yeah, I'm sorry, Justin, did you have your hand up earlier? I wasn't sure.
Um, I, I did, yeah. So I, I just wanted to, um, call attention to the fact that it, it seems like we got an email that says minor changes to public comment guidelines at, at 5:41 today. Um, and I'm not sure what those changes were. Um, and, and perhaps the, the clerk could, could clarify that, but I, I guess, you know, just overall, I'm, I'm still, as I'm looking at the, what I think is the newest pack. And now there seems to be a typo in the first item. There seem to be, uh, at least a few other changes we'd like to make in terms of, um, the, the, uh, notion of, of reading, um, of recording comments that came into the board and in the minutes. Um, I don't see that here, and I don't think there's a necessity of voting on this this evening. I think that it's a, an important document, and, uh, it's, it's about a page of material that needs to be done correctly. Um, and I would still be in favor of making some of these changes and putting it on the agenda for the next scheduled meeting.
Okay, thanks for that. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Yep, I have multiple people.
Okay, great.
Uh, let's see here. I'm gonna try to, uh, Mr. Pierce to talk again.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Pierce, you should be able to speak.
I still see he's muted. On his end. There we go. Uh, I don't, Art? Uh, something's not coming through.
Yep, I'm getting from him. He says his phone is unmuted. Not sure why we cannot hear him. I can't answer that question. That's a technical issue with the program. I'm not sure what's going on in his answer. His end, um, he did put in, "What about moving admin items to the end of the meeting?" I don't think that's part of our guidelines for public comment, that's how the agenda is structured. And that would be a direction by the board, not to speak for the board, but that's my interpretation of that.
Okay. Are the right, uh, maybe I can figure out what's going on on his end, but is there anybody else at this point?
I'm looking. Uh, Mr. Ferris says he had his hand up, but I believe that was prior. I don't believe I've missed him. And I, oh, here we go. Okay, the question came in from Mr. Pierce. He wants to know why the public cannot provide clarification or correction to a board member's comments when a board member's can request clarifications or corrections.
I'm not fully understanding that.
I think he's relating to the subject, "Board members may, with permission of the mayor, interrupt a speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information."
Yep, Renee?
So it does seem like we have a few more things to hash out, and we've got, uh, a pretty full agenda. So, um, are we gonna take, I mean, I, I, what trustee Lightgibb is saying is let's take it, do one more iteration offline and bring it to the, to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that, absolutely, sure.
I'm, I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, yeah. Lily, any thoughts on that? Lily, do you have any, any thoughts on, on, you're, okay?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, okay, so let's do that then. And thanks to the public for, for weighing in as well. And Art, I'm sorry that we had a technical difficulty there.
I would just request that the board send me any changes or whatever they want to see in this, because, you know, there's no intention in mind to limit anybody or change anything. I was trying to mesh and come up with the best policy possible. So, there you go.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for working on that, really. Okay, anything else, Dorothea, in your report before we go into?
You know, there is other items. I'm just trying to make sure we have everybody. We go into our vaccination policy. Um.
Do we want to address that after the public hearing? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I, I know people are waiting for the, the public hearings.
Do we want to move forward and come back?
Yeah, then maybe we can circle back. I'm just thinking just because people are.
I'm always here.
I know. You're never not here. So, okay. No, thanks. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just think.
No, no, that's absolutely fine.
Okay, so, um, first up, just, uh, the first item is the non-municipal permit for Friends of Pittsburgh Library, their book sale?
Yes, this is, they have an annual book sale, and this is following in that tradition, so I just need approval. They're non-municipal. I do apologize, I did request for them to put it on the non-municipal form. I know the board prefers the applications be in that format, not the letter format, and I did not receive any comment back from them. So I will reiterate with them that they really do need to fill that out. But I think if we can go ahead and just approve them for now, that would be appreciated.
Do we want a, a conditional approval that they come back and fill it out, or how do we, you want to?
We can do that, whatever the board.
To make sure we're doing things appropriately.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Are, are they in the, within the timeframe? I'm sorry, I haven't working on from this little tiny phone, and I don't have the, the, their request from, but what is the date of the sale?
The one, the first one will be September, uh, 17.
Now, we'll need a 45.
So they needed, okay.
Yep.
So we'll need a motion with that.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion with that. Someone wants to make it?
I'll make a, a motion to, uh, approve the Pittsburgh Community Library book sale, um, permit, um, uh, waiving the 45-day period. And then we also need, someone said something about a condition for filling out the paperwork or the form.
The proper form.
The proper form, thank you. Boy, that was pretty articulate, wasn't it?
Okay.
We got through it.
I will second down. Lamphier, second.
Okay.
I have you, Lily. Okay. Let's see, trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Lightgibb.
I.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Lily, sure.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I understand, uh, what Dorothea was mentioning about going circling back to the vaccination policy. But on there also, I would like to call attention to another item under the treasurer's report, and that was arborum donation. And since Brooklyn is still here, uh, I'm wondering if we might address that. What, what is that? Arboretum donation? And I think that there was also something that they had requested, uh, the garden club had requested to be.
Yep, and that's gonna be, that is an agenda item tonight, so they'll.
Okay.
Okay, that, that was the intention.
Okay, I just wondered what the arborum donation question was. Is that different?
It'll be addressed on, under that agenda.
I can address it during there.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I addressed it with the board, so I need.
Oh, okay, because it was under, it was under treasurer's report.
Right.
I didn't know if it needed a line item added to our budget, and that's something that the board would want to vote on.
I think.
If there's not a line that, that allows us to accept donations, we have to create that.
Yes, we do. And again, Lily, it is an agenda item, and we can do that when we reach that agenda item.
Oh, okay.
I think for the purpose of, of just moving forward with our business right now, it's on the agenda and it will be addressed.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, let's see, where did we leave off? Uh, application for short-term retail business?
Correct. Um, we received an application from Dave Jewitt. This is for the Christmas tree sales to take place over at the Pittsburgh Dairy. And I don't believe Mr. Jewitt was available to speak tonight, but this would be a matter of setting a public hearing to review his application, as we did for holiday hats and other applications. So.
I'll make a motion to set a hearing date. And I don't, Dorothea, you usually help us figure out when the most reasonable date would be.
I'm getting there. Okay, it's gonna be October 12th.
I'll make a motion to set a hearing date for October 12th for the application from Dave Jewitt.
Would it be at 7:15?
Uh, we can say seven o'clock. What I, what we do, we post it for seven, and I put in 7:15 if we're gonna be virtual, just to give the public a chance to get here.
Okay.
Um, hold on, before we go through vote, I'm sorry, or we want to get the second in.
Yeah, yeah, let's do a second first, and then we can bring it back. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Mr. Limbeck would like to address the board on this matter.
Okay.
Hold on here. Where did you go, Mr. Limbeck? Mr. Limbeck, can you raise your hand so I can find you? Thank you. Okay, you should be able to speak.
Good evening, John Limbeck, 62 State Street. And I hate to be the Grinch in this whole thing, but I don't know if it's a hard and fast rule that we don't, uh, grant special permits to businesses or situations where we have multiple violations. And, um, the dairy has so many unresolved issues. Um, they don't have a complete site plan. Um, they have a water drainage feature that's never been completed in the rear of their property. They routinely exceed the number of people that go inside, um, the dairy, uh, for the posted, um, bits. Uh, during the summer, you can hardly get a car through there, much less a fire vehicle. You've got the zombie houses behind the place. Uh, again, going back seven, eight years ago, uh, we had accepted an escrow account from the, uh, dairy so that they could continue with some paving. Uh, we had a $10,000 check, and shortly after I left, that check was refunded to the dairy. And again, I just think that with all of the ongoing violations that you've got at the dairy, that it would be inappropriate to allow them to have, um, special events out there that are gonna even add to the, uh, parking issues that you've got out there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes, Steve?
I just want to mention that there's no stipulation under the short-term retail in regards to violations as there is under special use permits.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Any other comments from the board? Or just further discussion? Is there a motion?
I already made a motion and.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did a second, we brought it back, sorry.
You ready for a vote?
Yep.
Okay, trustee Lightgibb.
I.
Trustee Lamphier.
I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move to public hearings for, um, special permits. And, um, I know the, the first one up this evening is, uh, 8 State Street, which is Thursdays. And, um, we've had some additional information come to our attention. And, um, I would like our attorney, uh, just initially to speak to this application.
Yeah, we received a decision from, uh, surrogate Chacho, um, with regards to the con. with regards to the contract by which the applicant made application for this special permit. And from that decision, we discovered that, in fact, the contract cannot go forward without Judge Chacho's permission. And he has not given that permission. So I would view the application as incomplete, and that be appropriate to not have a public hearing until such time as the application is complete.
Okay, thank, yes, Steve?
Um, we received, I received a call today from the applicant. Dorothy and I talked about it, and he requested that it be continued, if possible, due to the situation, you know, as Jeff speaks to. And Dorothy alluded that we may be able to open the, the public hearing, but continue it and carry it over to another meeting.
Well, but the application really cannot be deemed complete, so how can you, you really can't open, you can't open a public hearing on an application that's not complete.
Okay, that's, that's, I mean, I defer to you, Jeff, you're the, you're the counsel, so whatever you, you say, I'm just-
I mean, that, that would be my position. You know, we have at times allowed contract vendees with a, with a, with a good contract, you know, maybe subject only to financing contingency, to go forward with these kind of applications. But when there, it requires court approval as a condition of the contract, I mean, that's a whole different kettle of fish.
Correct. This is a difficult situation.
Firstly, you know, I don't really want our village looking like we're somehow running afoul of Judge Chacho's decision. You know, I don't really want us involved on that level if, I don't think it's appropriate. But the easiest way to deal with it is say it's not complete and don't hear it.
Okay, tha- thank you, thank you for that. Any other, yes, Renee?
So if the ownership details ever are settled, the steps then would be to get back to, will he have to submit a new application if he wants to come back and set a new hearing date? I mean, I know, we don't know how the judge is gonna rule on this, but what would be the steps?
Well, if he gets, if, if we get a contract where the judge has okayed the sale, then he could indicate that to us, and he said, he has a pending application, which he could then, the board could then move to, to public hearing. I mean, there are, you know, you know, everybody's read the decision, and from that decision, it's clear that there are two competing offers. And, and whichever one the judge approves, that would be the person that go forward with an application.
Okay, so at this point, if I'm understanding this, then we do not know who will ultimately potentially receive approval, whether it's the applicant before us tonight or somebody else with a competing offer. And as such, it is an incomplete application, and so it wouldn't be appropriate for our board to move this forward.
I would, no, that's my point, it would not be.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, if we had a, we had a complete application, then yes, you could open the public hearing and adjourn it.
Okay.
But we really don't have that situation.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board, please? All right. So, just so, to handle this properly, would there be that, do we make a motion to? Is it just-
Cancel the public, to cancel the public hearing because the application is not-
Okay, okay, so is there a motion to, as, as discussed?
I, I will move that the application for special use permit for Thirsty's be remanded, I don't know the right word, back to the building inspector until we receive a complete application.
And, and, okay, and should we also say in that motion that we will not-
Not be holding the public hearing.
Not be holding the public hearing? Because that was, so amended? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Renee got it.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Um, real quick question to the board, are, given the situation, should we, since this probably shouldn't have gone forth, should we refund the application fee?
I would think that'd be fair.
Yeah, we need to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to refund the application fee for the Thirsty's application.
I will second that. Okay, I'm sorry, Justin.
Justin wants to second.
We've beaten him out for a minute, he's seconded.
Okay, um, let me see. Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Next up, there is an application. Dorothy, I write for Fifty State.
Correct. Let me see, this is for Bonnie Jean Han, and I know she is here, let me unmute her. Okay, Ms. Han, you should be able to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yup. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? How are you doing?
Good. Okay, can you give us a little background here? We have the application, and I know we met with you before. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, not that I can think of, no.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions regarding this application?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
All right, I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Justin? We're waiting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes, and it looks like we have a Q and A and we have a hand raised. So, and it's the same person in the Q and A, so I'm just gonna let him answer that, provide his comment then. So, hold on. Mr. Limbeck, I'm gonna allow you to talk. You're free to talk.
Good evening, John Limbeck, sixty-two State Street. I'd like to add my support to this application and welcome Ms. Han to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Oh, no, we're missing, losing Ms. Han.
I know. It's, oh, you sound like you're sparkling. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
I am not seeing anything in the Q and A. Please note, if you're posting comments in the chat, I am not reviewing the chat. I'm only checking the Q and A for whether people participate. Thank you. And I don't believe I've gotten any written correspondence on this application as well, since we're inventing comments and letters, I did not see any.
Okay. All right, we're, nothing else?
Nothing else at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion, Lanfear.
Okay, trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board, Renee.
Thanks for calling, Bonnie.
Hang on, almost there.
Hang on, we're all coming down the stretch here. Is there any additional comments from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Bonnie Han.
Is there a second? Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Roll call, trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Oh, Steve, yes.
Yeah, Steve.
I, I just wanna say that this is like a combination between Laffin and Jeopardy.
I didn't apply to be the Jeopardy host, so.
I'm good, Steve. All we need is you to put that kitty cat filter on again, like one of our very first-
Oh, my gosh.
It could have been a lot of trouble.
Oh, well, Bonnie, we wish you all the best. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Bonnie, you too.
Okay.
Bonnie?
Yes?
Yeah, you come in and see me to do a change of occupancy permit for the, the function, please.
Okay, is it Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve, I'll, I'll do that this week, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay.
Okay. Next stop is sixteen North Main Street. Dorothy?
I'm looking to see who's here.
Do we have anybody to speak on their behalf here?
If you're here to represent the Village Bakery, please raise your hand so I can find you. I think this is you. You should be able to speak.
Hi, everyone, it's Tucker from the bakery. How are you?
Tucker? Is there anything you want to fill us in on about the application?
No, I have nothing to add at this point.
Okay.
Tucker, the, the building inspector sent us a little notice regarding the parking lot and the proximity to the tables on the patio. Had he spoken to you about his concerns at all?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so we received a note, maybe Steve would like to elaborate regarding the way cars, there's no, there were, previously, there were planters. Remember? I'm sure you remember because you put them there. There were planters that kind of let people know not to back up onto the patio where people are seated. So I think that's kind of what Steve was alluding to, and we'd like to talk about that maybe a little, at least I would, regarding those first two parking spots and how they back up to the patio.
We, uh, the planters are still there, unfortunately, the guests move them sometimes, so I, I can walk over there tonight and move them all back in place.
Okay. Okay, so yes, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, and talk, I was, I didn't realize you were moving some tables, expanding, until today, that, you know, sorry for that, but I have received a couple of calls over the last three weeks or so in regards to that area, just of concern, and, and people were nervous about, back, the tables, tables were closed, and, and there's no breach between the tables and the cars. So we could do something to, to close the gap or protect the, the tables from anybody backing up, that would be great. And it, to me, it's a safety issue.
Yeah, of course. The planters seem to have worked in past years, so I can, I can address that tonight.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other, any other comments or questions? I make a motion, we go to public hearing, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Please alert Dorothy.
And again, I didn't get any written comments, but I do have someone's winning money to speak. Hold on, I'll allow them to talk. Okay, you should be able to speak. Okay, Peggy, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
Chromebook in the, Chromebook is a little different.
We're having a sound issue.
My laptop.
Oh, she's frozen. Peggy, we, we were having trouble hearing you.
Having internet. I just have a question about how many seats are being added to the, the ba- All right.
Okay, there was a question, I think it was a question about how many additional seats are being added?
Again. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How many additional seats are being added, I believe, is what she's trying to ask.
Yes.
Uh, I don't have the exact number in front of me. But I want to see, we're looking to add the twenty seats into what used to be the breadroom.
And are you keeping the same number of seats in the, the main dining area? The original?
We are, but we would like the opportunity to maybe add a little bit more eventually when COVID becomes something of the past and we can get a little bit cozier in the Village Bakery again. So I guess not compared to where it is today, because we still have tables separated, yes.
Yeah, so right now, okay, Steve, yup.
So what would the total number of seats be?
The total number of seats? Is that the question?
Yes.
I, I believe what was, what was in the application as submitted by Charlie, I think, was eighty seats.
I didn't see that in the application.
I don't, I'm not seeing that.
It's on the drawing that was submitted to Steve.
Drawing isn't included.
The drawing was submitted late. Um, hold on, I can share it to the screen.
Oh, thank you.
Give me a minute.
Just for clarification to the board, I have talked to Tucker. I was going to go today and do a fire inspection and measure to find out what the exact occupancy is allowed by, by the use. I did not have an opportunity because I need a couple of hours, and I was involved in a few other things today, getting ready for tonight, and, and some other issues that came up, but I fully plan on going tomorrow to the bakery, measuring, and then Tucker and I will, you know, I will let him know what the occupancy is allowed based on the usable space.
And-
Oh, here we go.
It's kind of hard to fit it into the screen. I can roll it up and down if needed.
Yeah, but, but actually, I think if you, where you were, because that shows the seating. Yeah, there we go.
Okay, Mark?
Yup, oop, there's another table. There we go.
I think that's it. Yeah, got it.
Okay, so the eighty seats would include the outdoors?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's not what it says on the plan, actually.
So it looks like about fifty seats inside for the winter?
It says eighty inside, forty outside.
Oh, okay, well, that's- It looks like more than that.
I will have to hear back from Steve on that one, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's really gonna be driven by really what, you know, Steve, when Steve, when you take a look at that, what, you know, what can be acceptable.
Yeah, it's up to the fire code and the use to find how much physical space you need per occupant.
Okay. Dorothy, excuse me, Dorothy, it looks like Dan's trying to get in as a panelist. He's arriving at the meeting, trustee.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you.
Okay, can I go ahead and stop sharing my screen so I can?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, let's see here. I am not seeing Dan. Dan, can you raise your hand so I can find you? And we have Mr. Limbeck who would like to speak, so I will unmute Mr. Limbeck while I try to find him.
Okay.
And Okay, hold on here. Okay, Mr. Limbeck can speak.
Hey, John Limbeck, sixty-two State Street. I just wanted to clarify, the agenda I printed off today lists this as sixteen North Main Street. Is this actually the State Street location, five State Street?
Yeah, I I believe that was maybe an error. Our, we have office space at sixteen North Main Street.
Okay, all right, that, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, John. Were you able to find Dan?
I can't find Dan.
Oh dear.
Is I have another person allowed to speak, so I'm going to allow this person.
Okay.
That's me.
Oh, it's Dan. You see, you don't have a name assigned to you that I recognize. I'm so sorry. I will promote you to a panelist. Sorry about that.
Hi, Dan.
There he is. Sorry about that. Okay, I'll go back to the Q and A. I re answered that question already. I don't see any more hands up. I didn't get any emails, so I'm going to be gonna assume I'm safe to say we have all the public comments.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Lanfair, second.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lightkid?
Aye.
Trustee Keating, I don't know if you're comfortable voting?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, any other thoughts or comments from the board?
I would like Lanfair?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I would like to inquire how the board feels comfortable moving forward, uh, given that we have more information, uh, that is, um, going to be necessary from the building inspector before we can deliberate. So clearly, we're not, we won't be able to do that this evening. So how would the board feel comfortable moving forward?
I see Steve has his hand up.
You could, you could make condition upon the fire marshal's findings of of the proper occupancy.
Yeah.
That's up to you.
Okay, yeah, I I hear that. Yes, thank you. Uh, Justin?
Given that we received late the image of the property that included pretty crucial information about the indoor and outdoor seating, so forty, eighty seats indoors and forty outdoors for a total of a hundred twenty seats, um, and that was not included in the public packet. I think that, uh, that's, that's pretty important information, and I, uh, would prefer to hear back and and give the public some time to to weigh in on this one.
Yeah, I understand that, and at least it was shown, uh, to the public on screen tonight, so I think that that was helpful. Do we know what, how many seats are approved currently in the original permit?
That question, Dan, or Jeff, and I talked about this afternoon, I did not have time to research and look at what was previously approved yet the bakery.
Okay, yeah, Tucker, do you, do you have that information about what you were approved for?
I do not have that on hand.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, that could be helpful because maybe on an incremental basis, it's really not not as much as we're thinking. I don't know. And also, they actually have additional square footage, so that is something to consider.
Yeah, definitely, all the seats, definitely all the seats where the comments are used to be are all additional on top of there.
Sure, but because of COVID, they also have reduced seating in their main dining room, you know, so it's sort of, I, you know, it's kind of a trade off, I think, a little bit. Is there a motion? Anybody?
I, I, given that, um, the uncertainty here, uh, with what Steve is, needs to provide to the board, I don't know how Steve could move forward, even that we made a conditional, uh, if the number of seats do not comply. I think that that it looks like the board will require a bit more discussion because we're looking for information on A, how many seats were originally approved, and B, what the current, um, occupancy, uh, is now given the additional square footage. And so I think it might be, we we might want another meeting regarding how we're going to move forward with it.
Would there be a motion then maybe to, um, at least table it for now pending additional information to be provided?
That, that would be the motion I would feel most comfortable making. It's up to the, to the board.
Yes, Justin?
Procedurally on that, uh, would we be able to reopen the public hearing and leave it open until the next meeting and then, uh, provide the information such as the, uh, the diagram and and the seating numbers, um, so that the public can continue to weigh in at the, at the continuation of this.
Jeff?
It's an extremely tricky question because we have already closed the public hearing. It would probably over, in an abundance of caution, have to be re republished. Because conceptually, when you close the public hearing, people could have left and then will not know about the adjourn date and you know, when you're going to hear this again. So that puts us in a bit of a quandary about how to do this. Absolutely procedurally correct, or procedural correctness would say republication. Dorothea, do you have any thoughts?
My thoughts are same as yours. We already closed it. If we hadn't closed the public hearing, you could have adjourned it to the next meeting and we could have reopened, continued at that time. At this point, if we have to repost, it's going to be the October, I believe it's twelfth meeting.
Oh dear, Renee, yes.
Jeff, um, are there any concerns if we were to, um, approve it contingent upon the building inspector determining the the correct, um, seating capacity?
Provided that the board is comfortable saying that with this use, it's okay with the board if the maximum number of seats inside uh, is, that number is that which the building inspector says is permitted by code. So I just don't know how the board feels about that, the use being, we don't even know if it's extended or expanded or whatever, uh, being permitted to use the maximum number of seats provided by the building code. Am I correct in assuming that the outside seating has nothing to do with that component?
Steve is nodding yes.
To answer your question, Jeff, I am comfortable with allowing Steve to review that and and make the contingent decision. So you asked a specific question about that. I am very comfortable with that.
So that's, that's, that's the board, um, decision about the, the, the decision point about granting a conditional special permit.
Thank you, and and Steve, yes?
And that's, I I was going to say, I don't, I'm, I don't understand what the, I guess if there's a, if where there would be an issue, um, as long as it meets the code uh, in in regard to the occupancy and space wise, so I guess I'm not, not understanding where there would be any rub in, you know, allowing me to do the inspection and then doing it like it would any other business, making sure they maintain their occupancy based on, on the use and the space.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Jeff?
Well, the, the decision point is parking. So you you're talking about the impact, when when you review a special permit, you're looking at the impact on the community. I'm not suggesting there's an adverse impact, but that's the decision point, so that that would be what you would be concerned.
Yes, Justin?
Just another, uh, procedural question, Jeff. What if we were to not renotice the the public hearing? But then would the board still be able to, at the next meeting, vote to accept any feedback that's been received and any comments that do happen to come in and accept those as part of the public record, uh, for the previous public hearing?
I believe that too is problematic. But that, you're talking about the record of the public hearing. That you're accepting comment to which one, the applicant doesn't have really an access to respond, and other members of the public do not have an opportunity to respond really formally. So that's, that's why it's problematic that way.
Well, you know, the, there is no, there's an expansion because, you know, they have the additional square footage in the seating, but it is still the same intention of the use of what was originally there. And I I think it would, it really would have been helpful to have understood what was originally allowed under the, uh, the first permit in terms of seating, because I'm not so sure that there's, you know, may not be as significant a change as we're thinking because the tables are so distanced at this point with COVID. I I I agree with Dan, I I I'm, I am comfortable with our building inspector uh, making that determination as to whether or not it is in compliance with our code. We found that there were no other outstanding issues that the public had during the comment, and it was just really this question of the information about the seating and and how that was going to be handled. And again, I would, I would trust the building inspector, that's his job, so. Anyone else?
I I am comfortable leaving it up to Steve. I trust his judgment.
So do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, contingent on Steve's review that it meets, that the seating meets code. And now Jeff's going to change my motion.
Okay, Jeff?
I I would suggest that, uh, you're granting a special permit uh, with seating equal to that which the building inspector finds is permitted by the New York State Building Fire Protection and Building Code.
And I would, I would, I would do that as fire marshal, not building inspector.
Oh, thank you. You're right, yes. If that's your
I make a motion, I make a motion for what Jeff said.
I will second those fancy words.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Lightkid?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, congratulations, Tucker.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Thanks, Tucker. Have a good one.
All the best.
I'll be in there tomorrow morning, talk.
Sounds good. Uh, Tucker, it's standard question that we ask folks, other than this, is there anything that we can do to help your business? Uh, I should have been prepared this time, Dan, just as you asked me last time. Yeah, nothing I can think of offhand. Obviously, it's still just a challenging time. Our biggest challenge right now is finding qualified employees. And just, you know, hoping that, uh, we can get through where we're at from a health standpoint and back to where things were, so. We're just hanging in there, doing the best we can, but thank you again for asking. I definitely appreciate it.
Thanks, Tucker.
All right, thanks again. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to, um, our next item, uh, code update committee. I know that, uh, my understanding is anyway, that when, um, the code was updated the last time in past, it also, uh, there was a discussion that it perhaps would need a little bit of tweaking. And so, um, I've gotten feedback, uh, from the boards, um, about certain aspects of the code that maybe we should just revisit and just sort of give a little bit of an update. Um, I know, um, Steve, Steve, you may want to speak to this as well, um, because you're working with the code, you know, on a regular basis. So I I welcome your comments also to the board.
Yeah, I would, I definitely, um, would like to see us revisit the code. There were things that were done, that I think could use some tweaking that would make life easier for the residents as well as board members. And it, to me, it's overdue. Um, we've been talking about this since it was redone in two thousand and nineteen, since I got here. And, uh, there are some problems with what was written, as well as some things like, like I said, that I would hope we would take a look at and adjust. It will make life better for the village and for its residents.
Okay, thanks. And I, and I know, um, you know, Steve's been sort of keeping a list, you know, just sort of little aspects of the code that maybe we really can kind of drill down, and I also know that the Planning and Zoning Board, um, certainly has as well. So, you know, my thought is, you know, the rewrite's really been done of the code. This is really just kind of going back to very specific areas that have been identified, where perhaps you might need a little bit more clarity, and my thought was simply to have two members of each board, just work together, um, just to kind of, and then bring it back to this board, obviously, um, just to take a look at maybe where we can make some updates that are just clarifying, um, in certain parts of the code, and so, uh, you know, I was thinking, for example, from from our board, it could be me and, uh, the deputy mayor would be working also, uh, potentially with the chair of, uh, the PZBA, so that would be Justin Vlistra and Susan Loda, who also is, um, the, uh, chair for the seventy-five Monroe Project. And, um, I was also thinking then for the HPB, um, the chair of the HPB, along with, um, Jeff Pollak, who has, um, quite a bit of background in this as well. So, um, I just wanted to bring this up before the board because I do know this has kind of been circling the airport for a little bit, and I think it'd be great to kind of move forward and get things going. Any thoughts? Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Yes, my thought is that, that, that would be a good start, and, um, I'm wondering also if you might consider adding two members of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, who were instrumental in, um, writing the comprehensive plan, uh, which plays a very big part in what drives us, uh, with our code and any code changes we might want to consider. Uh, I think I would also appreciate, uh, a list to the trustees of what the specific, uh, code, um, changes and, and tweaks might, uh, be considering. Uh, that I think that would be, uh, very helpful information for us to have as well.
Yes, Dan?
Um, well, Lily, I think that's the point of the committee. They're not going to actually change the code. They're going to, they're going to give us a list of things to to work on, and ultimately, we, through the process, and public meetings and all the things that need to be done, will make those decisions.
Okay, good. I I I would just like to, in transparency's sake and for information's sake, as the building inspector pointed out, he has a, a running list that he's been working from, and I certainly would be interested in seeing the list of what he feels is problematic, because he made a statement that it's in the best interest, he feels it's in the best interest of the residents, and I think as trustees, we would like to have that information. So that, and that is my request, and my request is also to include members of the, um, Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Um, okay, thank you for that, Renee.
I was just, and perhaps I, I, you can answer offline, but I didn't know if, if trustee Lightkeb, given that he is the, the liaison for the PZBA, would like to sit in on, on that, and I know he's very good at code, having worked on the code, um, with him when he was on the, the planning board, so I don't want to make assumptions that, that I should be that, that person. Um, I think, I think trustee Lightkeb would actually be a better, a better fit. I will happily do it, but I wanted to, to, um, open that up as well. In case, I don't know if you're even interested, trustee Lightkeb, but you don't have to answer now.
Yeah, really, put him on the spot, right?
If I, uh, just may, may comment briefly, though, I I very much appreciate it, Renee, and I, um, you know, I think that you would also be great at doing this. I I think we can talk about it, the, my I, I think we can talk about it. The, my, my question about this is. What does the code update committee really mean? I guess it sounds like there are a couple of people being. Picked up from the planning board in the HPB. And it sounds like we are selecting who those people are. However, as independent boards, I wonder if, you know, it's really up to us. So if we're choosing, you know, this, this super committee or whatever of three different boards. Is it, is it still, are they still acting as members of those boards? Or are we just forming a separate kind of a group entirely? That's just a point of clarification, I guess, that I was looking for.
I think it's pretty straightforward, actually. I think, you know. The people on the boards know the code, they work with the code, and. They have identified issues that they have with the code. And I think it's just, it's kind of a natural progression. For the people on these boards who work with the code. To, to, to just help with, with a rewrite and identifying where the areas are that need to be tweaked. Steve, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, maybe. Oh, it was Jeff. Sorry. Yeah, Jeff.
I, I mean, I think to answer trustee Lekem's question. I think they would retain their identity as members of their respective boards. And sit on that committee providing the input they have as those members, the, the members of those boards. Not as some independent body that is charged with anything. It's just a rather informal. Collection of people to try to streamline the process, I think.
That's where I thought this was going. I think it's fairly straightforward. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate our attorney's statement on that. And that would be my understanding as well. I guess my, my thought is just since these are independent boards. Why don't we allow them to choose their, their own selection? You know, and then report back to us. It seems like we're overstepping a little bit and saying that, you know, we want these two people from the HPB, two people from the PZBA. These are our boards, which actually are tasked with the ability to make opinions on things like the code. And so I think that if they want to do this as a full board, that's totally fine with me. I was on the PCBA when we were consulting on, on the last code update. Or they might want to break out and do it with less than a quorum. I would be okay with either of those. I just wouldn't want to step on their toes.
Yeah, this really isn't a code rewrite, you know, so, and I appreciate those comments. And I, I think we, we all should, you know, consider those. For sure. It's, it's not a rewrite. It's not the way it was the last time. It really is, I think, probably pretty targeted as, and I think Lily's right, you know, there's been a list that's sort of been compiled, I think, from members of the board saying. Gee, this isn't really kind of working when we're, we're applying the code this way. We all should see the list, I think, absolutely. This is, this is, it doesn't have even the breadth or the depth of what was done in the past. Again, a rewrite of a code is really quite different from an update. I also like to speak to having members of the comp plan committee. I was a member of that comp plan committee, as was Susan Lota. I, I, I think that it, I think in the interest of efficiency, I would like to keep this initially with our board, the boards, just to come up. With kind of targeting these areas. This all will come back to the board. It will be going before the public as anything would with any type of code change or, or update. And so I think we, we need to be efficient about this moving forward, not a rewrite. This is an update. Yes, Steve.
Yeah, I want to, I, I, I partially agree with Justin because I think, I think it wouldn't hurt to go out and, and just ask the board, look, this is what we're planning. Who do you, you know, who, we, we thought of these people, but it's really up to you who, who wants to be on it. But. I do not, I, I would hope not. We wouldn't have full boards involved with this at the initial stage. Because you get all those people involved. It's going to just cause confusion. You need it, you need some point of reference and to keep it, keep it closer at first. Otherwise, you're going to get a hundred opinions and it's just, it's not going to be efficient. That, that's my efficient or opinion.
Yes, Dan.
Okay, so. Real quick, I don't, I don't think this has to be hard. Obviously, an entire board can make recommendations and say, these are the things we want to change. We're just looking for a couple of people to help move that forward and ultimately get a list to us. That's, it's a procedural thing. The full boards are going to have their say at every step of the way. We're going to have our say at every step of the way. And I just don't want to overcomplicate this. It just shouldn't be that hard.
Yeah, I agree with you, Dan. I mean, I think that's why, you know, we're, we're bringing it up in this fashion. Yes, Justin.
I, I appreciate these comments. I, I guess, again, I, I just don't want to overstep. I think that the independent boards are able to figure out how they would like to advise on the code. I understand there are lists. I've, I've seen the building inspectors list in the past. I've got it around somewhere and it's great. They're, they're great clarifications and. We should just put them on the agenda and, and rip through a bunch of them in one session. I don't know what else is, is planned here. I guess I don't feel that this, the code update committee, I don't know what the rest of the scope is. And so I think that, you know, the, the small list that we're talking about don't really require any other sort of a committee. You know, we can just look at it as a legislative body and, and consider those. And on the other hand, I, you know, I don't think that we need to overstep with the, the other two boards and they can make their own decisions on how to advise us. So I, I'm not in favor of a, a separate code update committee since I, I think that's essentially what we have in our, our government. We've got a. A board of trustees is legislative board and then two boards that advise based on their areas of expertise and training.
Thank you so much for that, Dan, and then Jeff.
So I, we're going around and around on something really simple. We're all in agreement. There's going to be a group of people to do this. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we form this committee. At the, at the behest of the mayor's suggestion and go forward from there.
Oh, okay. Is there a second? And then I'll bring Jeff in for the discussion. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Renee. Back for discussion, Jeff?
Well, it wasn't a discussion. I think that if, if we were charging the boards with. A job, then yes, we would not want to control how they do that work. But really, this is an invitation by the executive branch, if you will. To convene a committee of two from each. It's our invitation. And we're not asking the board to do work. So that, I mean, I think that's the distinction for me.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, yes, Justin.
I, I do appreciate that distinction. I guess I, I still do not know what the, the scope of code changes is. Exactly how this committee is going to be formed, you know, what kind of meetings we expect. It just seems like kind of a, an extra governmental entity that on the one hand is not necessary if we're talking about just minor updates. And on the other hand, doesn't have enough transparency or clarity to, to really be necessary at this point.
Decisions aren't made by this board. Decisions aren't made by this board. I, I really think we're overthinking this. This is a, this is gathering a list and then putting it into the proper process.
Yeah, I.
The entire process will be transparent.
Yeah, I, I disagree about this whole idea that it somehow isn't transparent. We're here, we have people who are, will watch the recording of the meeting if they didn't make it to the meeting tonight. We, we are very clear that everybody certainly has an understanding and it was a matter of record when this. Entire code read write was passed, that in fact, it would be revisited. And that was almost two years ago. So here we are now. I think, again, I agree with Dan and I agree with the comments, certainly the other comments that have been made. This is transparent. We're just getting members from boards who have used, used the code on a very regular basis to give input that'll come back to this board. It'll be go in, would go back to the public. There will be a hearing. This is all part of a transparent process. So I, I, we have a second and the motion is on the floor. Yes, Dorothea? Oh, you, you have to unmute.
Yep, we do have a public comment. It's from Mr. Limbeck. He said, how about two members of the public?
I'm, I'm a little wary of, I, I love the idea. I'm just a little wary of that because of, of. How technical the code is for somebody to come in at this point. I, I think the public's best place will be when we're debating it and when we're debating making those changes.
And again, this is not an entire code rewrite. This is really taking a look at sections of the code that don't seem to be working as efficiently or as effectively. And certainly the boards have worked with this code. Yes, Justin.
So which sections?
To be determined by all of us. This is, this is exhausting. This is a really simple ask. I don't, I don't get the pushback on this. They're going, they're gonna, they're gonna create a list. We're gonna look at that list. We are going to decide, should we do this? Should we not do this? Should we add some other things? Should we take some things away?
Yeah, I mean, we've all been in on code, code rewrites or code up. I mean, I certainly have many times. That's just how, how it works. And, and the process is transparent. And we bring it back to the board, we bring it back to the public. There's hearings. That, that's how we, we, we work. That's how we do it. Yes, Dorothea?
We have two members of the public wishing to speak. Okay, Peggy, you should be able to speak.
Yes, um, I'm just wondering if maybe we could have some examples of what we're talking about. Maybe that would clarify a few things.
Yeah, in fact, Steve, you may want to speak to that. You've had some recent issues.
I don't have the list in front of me, but there, you know, I mean, there, there's a full page list of, of, of issues. I don't want to use the word. Mistakes, because I don't want to offend anybody, but there are, there are things. The code, code was written. There are things that don't fit where they're supposed to. There's, there's zoning. Definitions or, or labels that aren't in the right place. There's charts that are for one thing, but. Not for another. I mean, it's, it's a myriad of items. And, and just how we, I mean, I deal with it every day with the, the, the plans that come in. And, and our requirements for things that I think we could pare down that would make life easier for the residents. And make it more efficient for our boards.
Yeah, Steve, I, I was thinking of a, a situation. I think that arose actually shortly after I took office, or it was for. A, like a one day event or an afternoon event. It was a fundraiser. And now under the current code, didn't they, they were required now to have a site plan? There, there were. If you recall that.
Oh, yeah. It is one of my pet peeves and, and is the fact that the things we require site plans for. Ninety percent of all municipalities don't. For, for simple functions, we're requiring people to spend 60 days and $200 for a site plan for a one day event. You know, things like that, that we really should take a look at as to how we, you know, what we.
For. Thanks for, thanks for the question, Peggy. We could give 20 examples. It, it doesn't matter that we're going to put this into the committee. And the committee is going to come back and then it's, it's going to go through the full public process.
Excuse me, Justin. I know, Dorothea, oh, Dan, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No, I was. I was just saying, what's next?
Okay, I still have somebody else to speak.
I have still people online.
Okay.
Art Pierce, you should be, Mr. Pierce, you should be able to speak.
Okay, hopefully it worked this time.
We can hear you.
All right, great. Thanks. It was a, a hidden, a hidden setting on my computer. So with that, hopefully you don't have reverberation I have at this end. But in long and short, I agree with what Justin and Lily had made comment about. In brief, I think that if there's. In two of the comment about it's a straight matter, I think it's just a matter of asking each of the respective boards. Submit a list similar to what Steve has just submitted a list or has a list to submit to the board of trustees. Pretty straightforward. We have it from the building department. You ask each of the respective boards. Please give us a list of what you see relative to the code and what you see are concerns or needs slight modifications. Because it seems that there are only slight modifications here. And, and be done with it. There's no sense in adding another layer of. Complexity to it. It's pretty straight. And. If, if the board decides, the trustees decide to go with this committee, which here again, I think is superfluous and. Later upon later, then I agree also that out of respect for the various boards, let them select who they should represent. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Next, Dorothea.
Okay. Um, I have a comment from Dave Ferris. He says, why not just ask each board to create a list pertaining to the code sections that impact them? Why should HBB review zoning? Why should PZBA be reviewing historic preservation issues? Have each board focus on their area and come back with a list.
That's just common sense. So it sounds good.
Yeah, and, and that's probably what the, how the committee would run it. You know, I mean, I think, I, I think, again, it, it's pretty simple. Just a way of gathering the information, putting it together. And making the suggestions and bringing them back. Yes, any more comments, Dorothea?
Um, if you lose me, my screen just did something funny here. So.
We see you.
You see me, but I can't click on anything right now. So I can't say if there's a question in Q and A. Dan, I believe I made you a co-host. Could you?
Yeah, there is not. There are no more questions in the Q and A.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay.
And if I disappear, I'll be back.
Okay, okay. Let's see. Yeah, Renee. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Justin, you had your hand up before.
Go ahead. I think someone else can.
All right, okay. Renee?
That was the only thing. I think, I think we're all talking about the same thing here. I think by calling it a committee, it's making it sound like there's going to be a series of meetings and charrettes and things. And I think we're just putting people in charge. We are. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to ask each of the boards for their list. I know that Justin Vlistra. Has a running list, much like Steve's, because they've already been working on these. The HPB probably has theirs. And it just means that there's somebody there to help. Look at this list and aggregate the most important things and bring it to the board. Right? We're not talking about adding another layer of bureaucracy. We're just putting some people in charge.
Exactly. And I think, I actually think it's, it's actually frankly, a little more efficient to do so. And. We, we have a motion and we do have a second.
So we want to call the vote?
Yeah, Dorothea? Dorothy, are you frozen?
I think she is.
I think she froze. Oops, we did lose her for one second here. If you'll excuse me, I'm, I'm, I'm actually in the next room.
Make sure she's still there.
Doesn't have a mask on. She's, she's trying to log back in. So we'll just have to wait a minute. Everybody be patient. This is where we should play the music and have an intermission. I'm wondering if we shouldn't call a brief recess, maybe just to, guys want to.
Take five?
Yeah, take five kind of thing. While we reset.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, sorry to the public, but we'll just take like a couple of minutes. We'll take maybe three, three to five minutes here just to let Dorothea kind of recalibrate.
He's promoting her right back now.
Are you getting, oh, good. Okay.
Panelist.
Nice. Wonderful. A musical interlude. I love it.
Hey, Steve, Steve, I love it too, but I, I need Dorothea to be able to hear me.
Oh, she's.
Dorothea, so I, I, I keep promoting you. And I'm, I'm guessing you have to click some kind of accept. So I can see you and I am.
I'm hoping she can hear us. Let me.
She can hear us.
Okay.
Did the laptop die or is she on a desktop?
She's on the desktop and for whatever reason it froze. She's on the desktop and for whatever reason it froze.
I am, and it's not going through. So it's Dorothea. That's the only solution. Oh, okay, hold on. Dorothea, can you talk now?
Yeah, I can talk now.
There we go.
Yep, but I can't function. I can't see Q and A. I can't see anything. My computer completely glitched. Maybe I should totally log out and log back in.
Yep.
Just tried it again, promoting you to panelist now that you can talk.
Yeah, it's not letting me promote. I click yes and it's not.
Okay, all right, go and log in to Zoom. Make sure you're logged in as
Yep.
Village Clerk.
Yep. All right, let me leave. I'll come back.
Okay, I hope you do. Oh, we should have a Beatles sing along. That was nice. Thank you, Steve.
There you go, Dorothea.
Oh, she's back.
She's back.
Unmute. Unmute. There we go. Oh, you're muted again.
Okay. Sorry about that. Apparently having some computer issues on my end. Do apologize.
We had a beautiful musical interlude from Steve.
Yep, I got that at full sound in my eardrums. Thank you, Steve. Okay. So where do we leave off?
Okay, well, you were going to call the vote.
I'm calling the vote. Okay, did we get all the Q and A?
Yeah, they just added a bunch during that downtime. You can only speak once, so that's one of them. And then the second is, we've been talking about this for like forty minutes and trying to call a vote.
A motion and there was a second. We had a discussion and then we asked to call the vote and then you froze.
Okay, all right, I'm calling the vote. Um, Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, no.
Trustee Lightgibb.
No.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item up is DPW staffing. And I know Dorothea can speak, speak to this as well. We we've had a couple of discussions. As you, as many of you know, we had when a member of our crew retire. I guess last month. And so, you know, right now DPW is down a person. And also there's some, you know, administrative activities that we're we're we were discussing as well. And Dorothea, maybe you want to pick up on this a little bit because you also have identified some of the things and Zach, maybe you want to, you can chime in as well.
Correct. Um, some of the things, I believe Zach could use some admin help with some of the paperwork, computer issues moving forward. And in identifying these needs, it seems to me we have a person on staff who could fulfill that and we can move. Let's say we can move Sophie to be an admin for Zach and help him cover those duties, complete the infrastructure report that the board truly needs to see. Plus, we also need to advertise and obtain a person to bring in for Zach has another full time crew member.
And and as you all know, Sophie splits her time between the DPW out in the field during the season and then during the winter. Typically, she does administrative duties and archival duties and things like that up at the office. So and she's, you know, she has the institutional knowledge really and skill sets.
And especially at DPW, she's spending enough time with Zach and the crew. I think she knows what goes on down there and understands it a lot better than a newcomer would. So with doing that, we would technically open a position up at Village Hall. So I would also request if we looked at that, we would look at a new records person for helping us at the office. And looks like Zach wants to speak.
Yeah, Zach.
Has anybody talked to Sophie about this?
Yes, we did have a conversation with Sophie and she seemed in favor of it. She seemed excited to help you and work with you. So that speaks well of you. I think it's a great opportunity to expand the staff that we have and actually move forward.
Yep.
I I'd ask that same same as whenever we look at hiring, we take a look at the budget and and compare it to what, you know, what this would cost and the whole thing. So have something to react to.
Exactly. This is beginning of stages and looking at this. The immediate need is obviously filling the full time position at the DPW. And I know Zach has comments related to that.
Uh, yeah, I think we're going to be starting from the ground up, looking for just a basic labor without any set of skills, so we can mold them. I think we're going to be considering which, at this point, we have to start looking at to the minimum starting rate here to be competitive. Which we still have to discuss and see where we're at with this.
Yeah, can you can you identify, just remind the board what the what currently, or I guess what what has been in the past, the starting wage for a laborer?
I believe the union contract starts a labor without a CDL at thirteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Which is well below a competitive rate of pay in other municipalities.
Okay, and Dorothea is going to add something. I mean, I just wanted to let people know a CDL is the commercial driver's license. Okay, yes, Dorothea.
Zach, you're right. It's thirteen seventy-five. But if they have a CDL, we're going to give them a big seventy-five cents more. So would we actually bring them up to fourteen fifty, which does not help us compete with any of the local DPWs or any local community right now to obtain people.
Yeah, and in fact, at the town, what was the starting? We, I think we started to look around here what the starting wage wages were.
Starting rate, working for the town without a CDL is eighteen fifty an hour.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And and I think we all know, you know, where where the labor pool is today in the labor market and we we certainly do want to be competitive. So I think I think as a board, we really have to you know, kind of have a reality check here about what it's really going to take to hire and retain people. It's competitive out there. So I don't know that, you know, thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents or what was the other fourteen fifty or, you know, is is necessarily competitive. So I think I think as a board, it really behooves us to take a look at that going forward.
Yeah, it's necessary. This is this is something that has to be done just because it's been a revolving door down here. We get people in, we train them, they leave for more money. So it's just, it doesn't do us any good. The staff that we currently have here are getting older, not to say that they're incapable, but as they leave, the experience leaves with them. So to be able to keep people in here, we do have to provide some sort of livable wage that is competitive with the rest of the world. So it's necessary. It's not, it's not something that we're we're looking for, you know, as as special treatment. This is something that has to.
Thank you. Yes, Lily, I think you had your hand up. Yeah.
I did, I did. And I understand completely what what you're saying here. And I think that we should probably at some point have a board discussion regarding the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage that will be instituted probably within the next two years. So we should probably plan ahead for that. But what it also does, if we talk about this as an entry level fifteen, we have to look at what it, how that pushes up our next, our our workers who have been with the village for a longer period of time and also at the bargaining table with the with the union. So I think that I think this merits another meeting and discussion because it's an in-depth and and it is a big line item on our budget. But I am in agreement that we need to be competitive with our offering of how much wage. And I think fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage is a barely livable wage and we need to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, and I also think you know, it's it's again, it comes down, and this is something the board really, I would like you all to consider about how we invest in the people that we hire. Do we keep it at such a low level that we, as Zach has noted, that we train people and then they leave? Because there's other more competitive salaries out there. For me, I I believe in investing in people and trying to retain good people. And in the instance with the DPW, really building a crew where everybody is building on a knowledge base and skill sets. I I personally am in favor of really having that strategy of the investment in people and retaining people rather than churning through people because there is there is an additional cost to losing personnel having having that gap trying to recruit and get additional personnel. And and I think Zach's analogy of the revolving door is a good one. I I really don't want to see that. I think we have a tremendous crew, tremendous crew at DPW, tremendous staff at the office, and I think people should be compensated appropriately and fairly. Any other comments?
We do have one public comment. Mr. Marshall, you're free to talk.
Hi, this is Dave Marshall, member of the PCBA. And I just wanted to go on record and respect the fact that this is not specific to this agenda item, but rather the prior agenda item. I had submitted for a Q and A for a public comment and had raised my hand prior to the last vote. Mr. Trustee Keating had taken it upon his discretion to suggest that two public comments were out there. Dan Ferris had already spoke and he chose instead to disregard that my hand was raised. At this time, I won't make a public comment, but I did want to raise to the attention of the board the discretion that trustee Keating took as to not have me the opportunity to speak before a public vote was cast. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I'm going to address that because I was called out by name. I don't know where the rule came up that if if somebody raised their hand before the last vote is cast, they are allowed to talk. So we had a public comment period. We called the vote and it was time to vote. In the time between we called the vote and when we actually voted, there was a computer problem. It doesn't mean we open it back up for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dave, and thanks, Dan. Is there any further discussion about the DPW? Yes, Jeff.
Just make sure you you do this in the context of, since it's a union contract, make sure you you rope Christian into this discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, that that's the intention. Absolutely. Yeah, but we just wanted to bring it up tonight, you know, before the board. So I think some of the action items are, we should probably gather information about what is competitive in terms of other municipalities relative to starting rates.
Just so you know, we did that, I don't know, a year or so ago, we probably dig it up. Frank and I did that together.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, it exists. It's somewhere on hard drive.
Oh, okay, I was not essentially aware of that, but I think the board, am I correct that the board would like additional information about this? Am I getting not? Okay. Yeah. And I do think we, you know, we do need to move forward, but let's pull together some additional information. Maybe Zach and Dorothea, you can help with that in terms of what's needed. And we can, we can circulate that back to the board and bring it back to you possibly on the next agenda. Does that make sense? We're good? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Speaking, you're nodding.
Oh, hold on.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, never mind. It's for another agenda item. I just didn't want to miss somebody. Okay.
Oh, all righty. Okay, so that's what we're going to do. We have our action items. Moving on. The SRF review of the Nice Dot Village pavement marking plan, and I believe everybody has received a copy of that in their package. And Renee, you may want to speak to this.
Okay, I was going to ask you.
You're always on deck for this stuff.
So we, this is the review of the pavement marking plans for the resurfacing of Route thirty-one sixty-four ninety-six in the village. That's going to occur in twenty twenty-two. As discussed at our July thirteenth and August tenth meetings, the two big areas that we had concerns in the current plan were the South Main Street between Locust and Jefferson, where Nice Dot proposed two different versions of of removing some parking, one on both sides. Another plan had removing it on only one side. It is our desire to keep parking on both sides for for all sorts of reasons. And so that was one of the areas of concern and another was the new turning, a middle turning lane at the intersection of Monroe and Sutherland, where there's currently some, you know, the yellow hash marks that simulate a median and keep traffic out of there. So we had SRF look at those two areas in depth, but make sure they kind of looked at the whole village because they're very familiar with our active transportation plan and and all the other, the many plans that involve traffic engineering. So they highlighted the things in this plan. I mean, they highlighted the things in this report that we've been advocating for ten foot lane widths, additional crosswalks at Gaskin Way and Durham Way, ADA improvements, pedestrian improvements as part of the State's Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. And then they also made some recommendations that aren't included. So they highlighted concerns of the lack of curbing on State Street and South Main Street, South Jefferson Road, the need for transition zones at our gateways, again, medians at our gateways, crossings at Shane and State and in front of Village Hall, wider sidewalks when they replace the North Main Street deck, even though that's technically not part of the striping, but it'll be happening around the same time. And then they made some recommendation of some bike safety improvements at South and the four corners. And so some of these things are beyond the scope of what they're of the resurfacing work, and we may not get them now, but it's always good to document these things in writing and continue to push. Again, our two main concerns where that loaves the the parking on South Main Street, making sure that we maintain that parking and then also as a minimum, keeping that yellow hash mark area in front of Sutherland and Monroe. And all of that is in this report that you got last week. So hopefully you had enough time to review it, but I wanted to just give a quick recap to to those following along at home. Once we approve this report, SRF is going to going to put any additions we might have in there and take off that draft sticker there. And then we'll put it together with a letter from the village asking for these spots in question to accompany the report along with letters that we received from the State Street neighbors. If you recall, John and Art and some of the neighbors there put together some input about the years of struggles they have had with traffic calming on State Street, and we wanted to make sure that got in there as well. So I think I mentioned at our our last meeting that I already did put my traffic calming hat on and did a couple of rounds with SRF and we came to this final draft. Are there any additions that you all have that we need to bring up to SRF?
I I actually just wanted to to speak to, it's on page three. And it is, it is actually their recommendation. You know, on the Monroe Avenue area by Sutherland. And I actually really like it where they 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 suggest that we consider for the existing hatching is, instead of the existing hatching, a flush contrasting median to visually enhance and narrow that area, you know. I think that is a great recommendation. And I, you know, I just want to talk about that with you. If you folks have any thoughts on that. You know, I think it's more substantial.
I mean, you know, I'm a big fan of medians. They're and then they're proposing a flush one that would so it wouldn't impede the emergency response.
Right.
Given how narrow that that. Given how narrow that, that road is there. I don't, I don't think are the likelihood of getting it in this round of funding unless they get some more, you know, from the infrastructure bill. It does not hurt to ask, so that's why these things are in there. And we'll want to go ahead in our letter and, and highlight some of these things as well and kind of put in probably a one pager so that they know upfront what we've been asking for. And nothing that we would put in that letter and nothing in here is a surprise to them. These are things we've been advocating for, for years. And we, you know, slowly, each one of these projects, we get, get a few more things, which is good.
Yeah, it's chipping away, really, is what we're doing. Or chipping away or either wearing them down, I'm not sure.
Right.
And I also, on page seven, and again, this relates to back to State Street and all the issues that are there. And that is, again, putting in that, that flush contrasting median. And we've been talking about that. And that would actually be at the line coming in on the town side into the village. And I've been speaking with Bill Smith about this, he's a strong advocate for this, he wants this. So I am going to reach out and I would like the board to weigh in either way, to ask the town to write some, to write in support of some of these things as well with whatever we turn in back to Nice Dot. I think it would be sort of, just that, that show of support, I think, would be significant in addition to everything from the residents. Yes, Dan?
So real quick, Renee, this is really terrific work, and I know it's something you really care about. Was there anything that you were not able to get into here that you really wanted to that we can help with in any way?
Thank you for the question. I, most everything that was, that I thought was missing, I asked, you know, our SRF about to see if they could look at. And they added those things. And, you know, there are expert opinions. I always love to come up with things that would make it great, like putting a, you know, a big bulldozer in the middle of, of a parking lot, I mean, an intersection to slow cars down, but that, that's not something we can do. So they are our expert, and I feel like they did a good job in some of these thing, questions that I had that weren't really feasible, but they put their traffic, traffic engineering hats on and, and came up with some good solutions. I'm getting tired, I clearly rambled, sorry about that.
No, I, I think it's, I think it's great. And also, I really, it so dovetails and they, they refer consistently to what was already adopted in our active transportation plan. And I think that's very significant. And the components that also dovetail with the town's active transportation plan, because that was a joint plan. So is, is there any other questions, Dorothea? Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, we do. I'm going to call on Mr. Limbeck first. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Limbeck.
Hi, John Limbeck, 62 State Street. Thank you again, I'll keep my comments to three minutes. And I understand this report talks about pavement marking. And I would predicate my remarks with, they reflect the seven to eight years of no activity. And basically, I'm looking at page five and six. The general observations on State Street, item one, there won't be any six-foot bike shoulders within the village. There's just not room. And it's funny, because Mizdot has acknowledged that the wide shoulders from Wood Creek into the village line actually encourage the higher speeds. If you go on to 1A, the, the State Street place, shown place trailhead, until the speed is controlled, putting any type of a crosswalk in that location is just going to be an invitation for disaster. If you go on to page six, item C down at the bottom, the transition zone speeds. It's unfortunate that they chose to use 2005 data because it's extremely dated. We've had data given to us recently based on what Zach has done. And it indicated a much higher percentage at greater miles per hour than what they're showing here in this statement. And then they talked about bump outs at one point in time. And I don't know if those, it was never really explained to us what a bump out is. I don't know if that's something that's done with marking or if that's a physical construction that happens in the road. So those are the sum total of my comments, thank you.
Thanks, John, and I'm, I'm interested in the, the more recent data. I think if we have access to that, we may want to.
I, I've got it, I'll send it to you. We did it as, in the trustees about a year, year and a half ago during COVID.
Right, and it's not a, it's not from SRF or a traffic firm, it was our own data. And we can add that in.
We could add that in.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, good suggestion, John.
Yeah, thanks, John.
The bump outs, and Zach is here. We, last year, or gosh, it might have been before that, when we put the cones out to, to temper, we did it ourselves and left the cones out as long as possible to simulate some, some bump outs. And they did work. And when we talked to DOT, they said there's not enough room to allow for, they're required to have the bike, the bike routes there, which are not bike lanes, they're actually shoulders, but they allow them to put the bike markings up. And that won't allow them to, to maintain that requirement. And that's why they wouldn't put the, the, or agree to bump outs. Is that correct, Zach? My, do you remember this from, this is from when Mayor Corby was here?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Dorothea, are there any other questions or comments?
Yep, we have another person, hold on. Peggy, you should be able to talk.
A one thing that was confusing to me was what the board was going to accept and what
We're losing you.
That were coming from SRF. For example, South Main Street, between Locust Street and Jefferson Road or not, that kind of thing. And maybe you could be a little more explicit, or maybe the board could be a little more explicit about what you will accept in this document. Thank you.
So I think you asked specifically about South Main Street. As an example, yeah, sorry, you were cutting out a little bit. We, that was, that plan, that segment of road is what drove us to get SRF involved because we, we want to maintain our parking. And this report advocates, I mean, allows us to advocate for that by, you know, laying out the case that you, you need to be taking into context the neighborhood when talking about complete streets. And parking actually allows us, in addition to giving residents and visitors a place to park, and that's, you know, highly utilized parking, it serves to calm traffic. And we, when we met with DOT, they said it was, you know, up to us to come back to them with some suggestions about some of their designs there. So our main goal is to keep the parking there on, on that particular section. And that's, that's laid out in this plan. I think that everything they are giving as the best practices here and the best recommendations is what we would also lay out in our, in our letter. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just also, if I can very quickly add, I think really the way the report is written is that they're kind of giving the, you know, sort of the overview and the situation and sort of, you know, and you see the pros and cons. But at the, at the end, at the conclusion, they do give what they have essentially recommended relative to what we also have adopted in the active transportation plan. Am I saying that, is that how you would see it, Renee?
I mean. That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, so what we would be looking at is, is the conclusions really at the end of each section of the village that they have identified and looked at. Yeah, yeah, Peggy, if you, is that clear, clearer?
I think so, Lisa.
Okay. Okay, yeah, if you look at the end of each section, I mean, they kind of do pros and cons. I mean, I think they're just trying to, you know, it's also an educational tool, I think, for us as well. But at the end, you really do see the recommendations and things that are reflected in our active transportation plan. And I think that's really what, what will be in that final letter going back to Nice Dot. Yeah, Dorothea, any other?
See, no, nope, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I, I make a motion that, well, I, I would entertain a motion regarding this.
I'll make a motion to approve the report from SRF.
I'll second it and also ask to amend the more recent speeding data, which I just circulated to the trustees from 2020. Thank you, John Limbeck, for that.
That, I don't know that we need to amend it because that's not, that, that would be accompanying this report.
Okay.
Which is the next step after we approve this, I'll explain what we have to do next.
Okay, then I'll just second it.
And then we'll, we'll take it back to SRF and they'll help us craft the final letter, you know, for our board. Am I correct, Renee?
I don't know that that was part of the scope of work. I know that they would probably assist us in, in making sure that we've laid everything out correctly. But that's on us to, to do the accompanying letter, and I'm sure they would review it. But that's not part of the scope of work.
Yeah, I, I think we're saying the same thing. In other words, they're just going to, they've, they've laid it out for us, we're going to, we approve this. You know, they're going to help us maybe dot I's and cross some T's here.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the vote then?
Okay. Um, trustee Keating?
Keating, go.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanfier?
Lanfier, I.
Trustee Lightke?
Lightke, I.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
So Mayor Plummer, before we move on, do we need to, so do we need to make a motion to allow the mayor to pen a letter on the village's behalf and put all of this together? Or are we going to put it all together and then bring it before the board at our next meeting? Because I'm afraid that the timeline's a little tight, we need to be getting, yeah. So I don't know what the appropriate depth of involvement is here.
Okay, yeah, no, you're right, we have a tight timeframe, yeah.
What, well, what's the timeframe?
They want it back as soon as possible by.
Which, which day?
We need to get back to DOT because they need to finalize their plans by like October 1st, is when they were trying to finalize their final design. So I, I don't think we want to get back to them after our next meeting. I mean, it would be a little tight if we could put this all together and have the board review it offline. Are we allowed to do that, where we can circulate it and make sure?
You can authorize the mayor with your assistance to put together a letter and send it to DOT, and they even give courtesy copies to the board before it goes out.
Okay, great. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Lily.
Is there a second?
All second.
Hey, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, I.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, I.
Trustee Lanfier?
Lanfier, I.
Trustee Lightke?
Lightke, I.
Mayor Plummer?
Oh, Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, yeah, Renee, we'll, we'll get together on this and turn this right around and get things back to the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for hot showing this, this is, this is really great. Okay, the next item up is the referral to the HPB regarding actions taken at Village Hall.
Sure.
Yep, Justin.
May I? Sure, so everyone has received this resolution that I put together in the packet for today. And instead of going through that and just reading it, basically, the idea here is that we have an incredible shared historical resource at Village Hall. It's culturally important to the village, it is economically a large asset belonging to the village. We have a very talented board of people on the historic preservation board that review changes that are publicly visible on the exterior of the structure. And they've been consulted in, in past years about significant renovations, including putting an ADA accessible ramp on the outside previously. But what's missing is that we don't really have oversight or, or input from experts so that we can achieve alignment on what to do to the inside of Village Hall, specifically talking about more permanent changes and, and just making sure that what we're doing is aligned with best practices. So I fully realize that this is not the jurisdiction of the historic preservation board. I'm not looking to change the, the code that, that would give them different jurisdiction for being inside of buildings. This is really just saying, hey, when, when, you know, this is a mutual agreement on the board that when we're going to change something that's going to have a long-term impact on the asset of Village Hall, we'll send it over to the HPB for an advisory opinion and then think about that. So that's, that's really all this says to me. And I would be happy to go over it, but I think you've all seen it in your packets. And it just gives a little bit of historical detail on Village Hall other than what I just said. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
Yep, and I, I, thank you so much, Justin, thanks for putting that together. I have some thoughts on that, but I do see our attorney's hand.
Yeah, I don't want to butt in here if the board wants to get their thoughts out. I, my general concern about this, and I've expressed it to trustee Lightke, is the board really doesn't have expertise in this kind of thing. They've never had any training. I mean, I, I certainly don't know whether there's a distinction between interior and exterior, but it appears to me there is. But I, I, I'm just wondering if there's some other entity that's better placed to, who's qualified to give interior advice.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak to that. I, I think, I, I think our HPB does a great job. And their purview, as, as you have mentioned, is exteriors. I, I welcome the idea of having advice and having some sort of opinions being generated relative to any changes. I, I personally think that the way to go would probably be to seek that kind of advice on interior specifically from the Landmark Society of Western New York. And in fact, that's part of their mission. They work with municipalities and all kinds of other organizations and private homeowners as well, not only on exterior restoration, rehabilitation, or renovation. They also do give advice on interior work as well. And in fact, I don't know if any of you have been in the Warner Castle. They, you know, they took up residence there a couple of years ago, relocated from Corn Hill. And I went down there and visited the director, Wayne Goodman. They have done an extraordinary renovation of that property. And I would encourage anybody interested in historic preservation to go down there and see that property. It is absolutely amazing what they have done. That, that I think maybe would be a better fit. I, I understand where you want to go with this, but I do think they really are equipped, certainly with the expertise and the knowledge over the long term for something like this. Yeah. Any, any other thoughts?
So we're saying we don't think that the HPB is necessarily the right entity to make the calls on the, the interior things we're talking about.
Well, I think, yeah, I think, you know, Jeff, if you want to weigh in with your thoughts again on that. I mean, I think you, you were, you know.
I got him, you know, I don't, he doesn't need to repeat.
Yeah, but I mean, I think he's had, you know, he's also just had discussions with the board. I mean, their, their purview and what's in our code is exclusively relative to exteriors of buildings. You know, and they have, they have helped, you know, with a, with a ramp going outside and how that will affect the exterior of this building, all of that. That's why I'm just thinking, I understand where you want to go with this. But I think that the Landmark Society of Western New York, it really is, is just top-notch in this. Yes, Jeff?
I, I just want to correct something you said, I've, I've not had a discussion with the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I talked about it briefly with, with the, the chair and one of the members on the way out of the meeting last night. And I really didn't get a sense, I, I just, I mean, that's, that's my take on it, is they never, they really haven't had the training for this. But certainly, the board of trustees could get the HPB's view of it. But that, I mean, that's all I have to say, I'm sorry, I interrupted again.
No, you know, all, all good thoughts, you know, I just think if, if that's what we want to do, let's really seek the top-notch, you know, expertise, absolutely. Yes, Renee?
I appreciate the intent of this, which is to make sure that we have a, a check on it on these changes. Does the Landmark Society charge for that? Does the Landmark Society charge for that? Or is that a consulting? Is that something we need to work into our budget?
No, no, and I can tell you the meeting that I've had with them, that I had with the director. They actually, that's, that's their mission. You know, they're a nonprofit. There may be certain circumstances where they would charge a nominal fee. But they work with, they work with municipalities. And in fact, he informed me that there's some grant money available and that they may, if we are not in a position perhaps to, you know, sometimes you have to match the money upfront. You know, for the grant and sometimes, you know, we're not in the financial position to do so. He actually said that there could be an opportunity next year with the Landmark Society where they essentially would give us a bridge loan and front the money for the grant, knowing that they would be repaid. That's kind of great because that's actually part of their mission. And we do have exterior maintenance and some things that are going on. We've also, I know Dorothea has a list of some of the items as well. And that would be a perfect opportunity, one, to seek the grant funding and to work directly with tremendous experts in the field from the Landmark Society of Western New York. So I'm excited about that process. I think, and I think it'll be great for our village. And also I know that there are members of the HPB that are very familiar with the Landmark Society and really respect the work that they do. Yes, Lily?
Would there be a way, Justin, that you would consider amending your resolution to direct the Board of Trustees or to refer to the any interior changes to the Landmark Society if they are the more correct entity to help the village make correct, historically correct changes to the interior? Rather than the HPB giving the information that we've received here? That's my question.
Absolutely. This is brought up for discussion, the intent, and I see there's a public comment which we can read into. The intent here is taking care of our assets in the best way possible and achieving as much alignment based on the information and the resource that we have available to us. So certainly, if the best group is the Landmark Society, I'm fine with that. And I think that perhaps we can research and we could ask, I think it would be appropriate to ask the HPB and see what they think about getting some of these questions. Maybe they don't want them. And I have not asked them yet. So I think that perhaps we could, as an action item, ask the HPB what they think about providing us with some advice. Keeping in mind that, you know, I know that our attorney mentioned that they might not know much about interior restoration. They can always decline to provide an advisory opinion too. So, you know, this is not a demand that they have to pretend to be experts when they're not, if they don't feel comfortable doing that. So what I would suggest then, and I want to get your thoughts on it, is that we ask the HPB if, if they, what they think about this and if they would like to provide advice. And if there's other information about the Landmark Societies, who we consider that as well and consider both these options at the next meeting with essentially the same resolution.
Yes, Dorothea?
I have two comments from the public and we'll allow the first person to talk. Ms. Carabash, you should be able to speak.
Dorothea, I would suggest that it would be helpful to, for the HPB to consult with the Landmark Society about these kinds of issues. Occasionally, there may be opportunities for the land, or for the HPB to actually consult on interior issues for landmarks. Although I think, I think that's part of the actual preservation code that they do have a role for some significant landmarks in terms of interiors. And perhaps they need more of an education about, about that from the Landmark Society. I would suggest that they establish a closer relationship with the Landmark Society about interior preservation issues. And that might be a way to use the HPB, but also to access the Landmark Society over these kinds of issues. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Yes, Jeff. Jeff has his hand up. Excuse me one second. Yeah.
Their jurisdiction does not extend to the interior. There is no special exception in their code for landmark buildings. It just, it doesn't. The board would have to expand their jurisdiction. That's up to the board. Currently, they don't have that jurisdiction.
Oh, yes, Justin?
If I may, just to respond to our attorney's point, I am not asking for them to have jurisdiction. I don't think they have jurisdiction for interior either. I don't think that's necessary to ask for an opinion.
I was, I was only being responsive to the caller's comment.
Thanks for the clarification, Jeff. Appreciate that. Yes, Dorothea, is there any?
Okay, yep, we have another. Mr. Diaz, you should be able to speak.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Gabe.
Hi, Lisa. Hello. So yeah, this is a little frustrating from my point of view in that we're getting a, something that seems to be clearly motivated and I want to know what the motivation is. The motivation offered by the trustees was that this resolution is intended to protect our assets. But why is this being raised now and never before? What's the real motivation here? Was there some egregious misstep that must be corrected? If not, without this context, this just really seems like a big waste of everyone's time. What's going on? What's all the hubbub about?
Okay, thank you, Gabe.
Would you care for me to respond? Actually, I would not respond to this exact question. I think that it's, it's the wrong focus to say, you know, what, what is the problem here? The focus is on achieving what is best for us with an historic asset that requires specialized knowledge to take care of. It's expensive. It belongs to the village taxpayers. And we all want to do what's in the best interest of everyone. So that would, that would be my response. It's looking forward.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're on that path. And as I can tell you, anybody and any, anybody walking by the front of Village Hall can see that these small little balconies that are outside of the, of my office here have crumbling concrete and that the wrought iron is compromised. And so that is something where, in fact, I reached out to the Landmark Society and said, you know, we're gonna need some help with this. We have loose marble tiles on the front porch. That's why it's covered with a rug because it's a safety hazard. It isn't like you just go get a tile guy. We're gonna, you know, my thought, again, the resource is the Landmark Society for a lot of this stuff to help with this. And obviously, if the HPB wants to weigh in, they certainly can. I'm just talking about the list that we have with our building in terms of things that need to be done. And the Landmark Society is an extraordinary resource for this entire region. So that's all, the only reason why I'm bringing it up. I think we're all on the same page. We want to protect the historic asset. I think every person on this board wants to protect this beautiful property that belongs to our villagers. It doesn't belong just to us. Yeah, Justin?
I really appreciate it. It does sound like we're on the same page here and this is about a positive resource that we can use to do the right thing with the Village Hall. I'm also sensitive to the, what Mr. Diaz mentioned about this taking up a lot of time. And with, with all due respect, I think the Landmark Society might be great with this. My preference would be to go to the HPB first since they're villagers. And I think that, you know, there's a channel open to ask them for their input. I don't really know anything about the Landmark Society personally. So my inclination to get the ball rolling here would just be to ask the, ask the HPB for an opinion about what they think about advising us periodically on interior changes that are, that are intended. So that's, that's gonna be my, my motion. I can, I can repeat it if anybody would like. Sorry, it's, it's getting, getting late already, but.
Okay. It's basically an action.
Yeah, to ask them what their thoughts are.
What they want to do, if they even want to take this on, or they're like, oh geez, you know, there are other resources.
Yeah, and based on.
Do we need a motion for that, Jeff? Or is that just something that we, we would want to just follow up with them and just?
You can, you certainly can do it by motion. My understanding was there's already been a referral made.
This is distinct from the referral.
Okay. Sure, it's certainly appropriate for a motion.
When you said there was a referral made, what, what? Okay, so this is something, all right, okay.
I thought there was a referral made, you know, and I'm certainly, that referral didn't specifically request their opinion about giving you these kind of opinions, but you might, you will probably get that in response to that referral. But if, you know, I mean, if there's a specific motion that, that needs to be made to get that referral specifically about how they feel about offering their opinions on interior renovations, why not? I mean, you'll get it.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure we were on the, going down a track here. Okay, Justin, do you want to make a motion?
Yep, so moved, as our attorney expresses, just to ask him about their idea on this.
Okay, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Do we have to make a motion on asking their opinion about?
Evidently we do, and we just did. So Dorothea's gonna call the vote?
Okay, trustee Keating.
I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Lanfier.
I.
Trustee Lightkid.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I. Okay, so we'll ask them. Okeydoke. The next item up, Ethics Board Complaint and Processes.
Yes, that would, that would be my item again. And I realize it's getting late, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. We've, we've always had a provision in our code to have an ethics board and it's, it seems to be getting more and more attention lately. I did file a complaint with the Ethics Board, as I mentioned previously, in October of 2019. And that is almost two years old at this point. Since I filed the complaint, I have heard nothing about it. And I don't have any visibility into where am I standing in the process. When I make it a response, I really kind of losing confidence that I'll ever get a response at this point, to be perfectly honest. And I know that we did, the board at first was not seated. It was seated in this administration on June 8th, 2021. And I still haven't received any updates. And so my, my request would be to this board that I would like to have some transparency to increase public trust that this board is doing, the Ethics Board is doing, something that is in the, the public interest. So the basic questions that came to mind for me are, how many items do they have in their queue? How many times have they met? What is their expectation for when a decision may be rendered? Who met? When, you know, I know we've got a few people on the board. So who are the people who met on each of the different occasions? I just feel like right now there's no visibility into what's going on there. So my request is, is just that. And I'd appreciate discussion or thoughts.
Great, thank you so much for that. Yes, Dorothea?
I have been, I've been working with the Ethics Board. They have met. They have about seven complaints they are working through. They have started issuing, I think they have one they resolved quite quickly. The others, I have not heard their determination yet. I am looking to meet with them shortly over another complaint. As well as, we will be adding them to our website. They have completed some minutes and I'm in the process of getting that updated as well. So they are issuing out minutes and everything else. It is just the three members and the only other person they have met with is me at this time. Okay, so I hope that lightens and I'm hoping to have more up. I'm trying to carve out time on, it's tomorrow, Thursday, no, Thursday, to work on updating our website to reflect the Ethics Board and what they have accomplished so far.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that too, because I think, you know, let's, let's really take a look that, you know, you filed, as you said, I guess, a complaint of a couple of years ago. And, you know, I understand why you're concerned that there was no action. But clearly, there would have been no action because there was no Ethics Board up until June 8th. So really what we're seeing now is a board that was seated a few months ago getting up to speed and starting to take action. And so personally, I'm grateful for the board, the Ethics Board. And look, I appreciate the work that they're doing and it sounds like they're trying to move forward and resolve things. So essentially, at this point, even though your complaint in this instance that you've identified was filed in 2019, it has only just been addressed within the last couple of months with a new board. And I think that's important for the public to understand. So thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Sure, and I appreciate your explanation as well as, as well as the facts that Dorothea mentioned. A lot of those I did not know. I think none of those had really come to my attention before. So that kind of visibility really does help me out. And it sounds like that's intended to be done on more of a regular basis going forward with the website and everything. So if the rest of the board doesn't have other questions at this point, I think that that addresses my concerns. And, you know, I would raise any, any further comments if there are adjustments to be made once we see some more transparency about what's going on.
I appreciate your use of the word transparency, but please understand it's an ethics boards. These complaints are confidential. And maybe Jeff can just speak a little bit to the process that when something maybe would be made public from the Ethics Board, you know, just in terms of process, maybe that'll be helpful just before we close out this discussion and move on. Jeff, could you add to that just about when anything would even be made public?
So it's confidential, as you suggested, their investigations, the complaints, the investigation. When they have a resolution, that comes to the Board of Trustees. And if there is a violation, that's when, if they have found that a violation exists, then that is when it becomes a matter of public record. It's filed with the clerk. It becomes a matter of public record. So it's not until they have found a violation to occur that anything is ever disclosed or made public.
Okay, and so in terms of the aspect of transparency, part of the integrity, I believe, of the board is that it is confidential until they have made their final determination, whether there was a violation.
It's the integrity of the board's work, but it's also a matter of protecting the complainant and the complaine.
Got it.
You know, that if it's an unfounded complaint, you know, nobody should know that. Nobody should know what the complaint consisted of or what it's, what was alleged.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think, I hope that was helpful for, for people, you know, listening and also for our board just to understand a little bit more about how that process works. Moving on, the Arboretum.
Sure, I wondered if, if we wanted to start with some public comments on this one. I understand that there is a statement from the Garden Club. And we could start with my statement. I've gotten some responses to that from the, the building inspector. But I'd also be happy to hear from the public on this one.
I don't see why we would change the process. We have a process in place to discuss it and then open it for public comment.
Well, my, my thought was that this has been an ongoing issue for several months. And I've, I've already said my, my piece about some factual items in the Arboretum and I've gotten some responses. So I was willing to defer to the public, but I, it doesn't matter too much to me either way. We can, we can go ahead if you feel.
I just want to stick to a process. I just want to stick to a process. There's no reason not to. We've already had people commenting on, on things that weren't on the agenda, that things that we'd moved on from. It's chaos.
Oh, okay. And I know that Steve's gonna want to speak to this. I think Zach also has some comments he would like to make. And Lily, I see your hand up as well.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. And again, I will request that all board members wait to be recognized before speaking. It's only fair that some of us are following protocol. Thank you. I will bring up again my request that was from the very beginning of the meeting in that we received, at least I did, a letter from the treasurer stating that she had received donations and we, as trustees, need to, are required to create a line item in our budget in order to accept these donations. So I think that's something that I would request the board to address initially because that's an action item. And these checks and donations are languishing and I, and they've been generously offered. And I think the village would be happy to accept their donation. But we have to create the ability for the village to do so. This is according to the treasurer and our attorney. So I'm.
That's correct. That's the process for it. Absolutely.
So I would respectfully request that I make a motion. So I would respectfully, uh, request that, uh, I make a motion that we create a line item in our budget. Uh, labeled for donations to accept, um, donations to, for the Robert C. Corby Arboretum and Wildlife Sanctuary.
Uh, go ahead, Jeff, thank you for.
Because I think someone came in also for something more specific, so we may want to speak to them.
And Dorothea might want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we also have to establish a, a special account for these donations.
Yeah.
I don't know that it has to be a separate bank account, but it's got to be accounted for as though, or a separate fund, so. Um, you know, would essentially be like creating a, a, a bank account for these donations. I believe that's what has to happen.
That is correct, and in addition, um, we received, if Mary has other donations I'm unaware of, I was requested that staff hand them over to me because we cannot process them. I have one donation that was received and it's very specific in its intent. It's saying the Robert C. Corby Arboretum and Wildlife Preserve sign. So it doesn't sound like it can be used for other items, it needs to be dedicated to a sign, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it's a directed donation, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so, I just want to, I want to speak to that, you know.
I, I don't know. I was gonna say, I don't know if you're looking to do two accounts, one for general donations to the Arboretum or one to a specific for signage.
Because, you know, you're, the, the Facebook, what was going around on Facebook was, uh, for a sign, I think. So I think, you know, people are, I think that's where the donations potentially would be directed, that's, that's at least my understanding at this point. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Is there a downside to having two lines on the budget? Is it, you know, a huge imposition, or can we make a motion to have?
I think this, I think this is clarifying. You know, it's clarification, Lily, that, that this was a, a directed donation, it is not to be used in a general sense. Okay. That's why I think Jeff and Dorothea were speaking to it that way.
Okay, so, may I amend my motion to, for, to two, to two lines or to two, uh, accounts? Whatever, whatever we, the board needs to do in order to accept the donations. I'd appreciate the help, Jeff, with the wording.
Yeah, I, I think the intent is to have a sign fund and a general arboretum fund, if I'm understanding that correctly, trustee Limpier?
It sounds, it sounds that way, it sounds as if the.
So the motion would be to establish those two funds and accept the donations and, if necessary, establish a line item in the budget.
Yes, thank you very much, so moved.
Okay, thanks, and thanks Steph for the help with that, uh, is there a second?
A second.
Oh, okay, the, Dorothea?
Yep, okay, um, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Lightgib?
Lightgib, aye.
Trustee Limpier?
Limpier, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, I also, um, since we are talking about it, um, want to, you know, give an update about, um, the work of the Seneca Park Zoo. Uh, Society, um, I did speak with the director today. Um, as you all know, um, earlier, a few months ago, they went in and mapped invasives, um, it's part of the iMap invasives program. And, um, what they, they are doing is putting together their report, um, for the iMap folks, organization. And then we will be receiving, um, that report about the invasives and all of that. Um, please understand that the Seneca Park Zoo Society, this is amazing actually, um, they do really great work. And, um, they have just picked up such extraordinary momentum with their outreach program of communities, it tripled this summer. So, um, the director apologized, said they're a little bit behind in getting the report out, I completely understand, they're a nonprofit. Um, you know, they're, they're funded through another organization, so we have the advantage of that, that we are not expending any of our own funds. Um, they will be on the agenda for our next meeting, and, uh, we'll be speaking about, um, what they saw, where they're going. And also looking for the dates as promised, because we're on track with what they said they were going to do. Um, it was a proposal that you all may recall that came before us in June. Um, and they have gone in and mapped it, they've led a hike, they're willing to do another hike at some point, um, because that was kind of a, a great thing. Um, they also want to lead a work part, party to hand pull some of the invasives around the trees. And then possibly put down cardboard, and I know Zach's been stashing cardboard for us, uh, at the DPW. And, um, then we're going to be mulching on top, um, and that's all in the report in June twentieth. Um, and we're moving forward with that, and so that particular, that last piece of, uh, doing that, we, the invasive suppression. And using the mulch is going to take place in October, and the reason why it's taking place sort of later, you know, really towards the end of fall. Is that the mulch is going to be, um, some of the greatest assets of our village, and those are the leaves that the DPW picks up all over the village, the tons and tons of leaves. Instead of, uh, taking them over to the town and leaving them there, uh, the DPW, it's great, they're gonna shred them and bring them all back to the Arboretum. And we will have tons of leaf mulch that we will be able to use as part of the suppression program for those invasives. So, uh, everybody will be able to hear more about it at our next meeting, um, but I'm excited about it. And once that goes down, um, they also have a, a seed mix to go over, so we can start establishing, um, some native pollinators there. Uh, to come up in the spring, and as you all know, as part of the erosion control plan, uh, and Zach maybe can speak to this. You, you all planted the ryegrass to really take hold and establish the soil, uh, at the top of the hill in the Arboretum. And that has been remarkably successful. Uh, so, um, Zach, I know you probably want to weigh in on a couple of things, um.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that today we went back and opened up the trail, uh, on the hill where there was a couple of, uh, straw bales. And the amount of dirt and some silk fence plucked, yeah. Now that the upper area, um, that section of it is established with the ryegrass, see which grew on great. Um, we cleared that out and opened that trail up, so now the trail can kind of circle right around. We are going to continue to leave, uh, the northeast side of that meadow. Um, cordoned off, just given that there are, there is a lot of debris that's still in the ground up there. Whether you can see it or not, it's under the low lying brush, so, um, it's, it's a hazard, so. We found the, um, uh, the posted sign that was at the trailhead. Um, that was, you know, someone must have grabbed it and chucked it into the woods, so found that, stuck it back in the hell, the hay bale, so that is still, um. That is still posted as, do not enter. But the straw bales, uh, where the silk fence is, uh, the actual ten percent that was missing. So that's, that's completely cordoned off now. Um, and later on this week, we're gonna go back and then do a little more weed, uh, cutting back the weeds.
Yeah, you've been, you know, consistently sort of going through, trying to keep up, um, as well, and I do, um. Also, uh, I think we, we had a discussion about, um, safety issues in terms of where the access is for people going in behind DPW. Um, and security in that area, um, you know, there's heavy equipment that they're using, they're pulling in and out of garages. Um, that road is a private road for DPW use. Um, and I know that Zach, that you and the crew have identified, um, you know, a number of times when there's been some concerns about cutting through there.
It, it sends, since the town park has opened up, I'd say that foot traffic through the DPW has increased three times, four times over. Um, before then, it was, you know, a stray cyclist or a jogger or, once in a while, the, uh, the, um, cross-country team from Southern running through there. But now it's, it's people all day long, they're wandering through, um, through our facility. And it's not just on the main road, it's cutting in between the barns and the buildings, um, and it's, it's not always a safe, uh, situation. So, um, we're considering blocking off, uh, the access to that trail. Um, which takes you through the gate where our piles are, uh, that's, it, it, it's, that's always been a functioning part of the DPW. Um, we've stopped going up on top of the hill and using that as a function of the DPW. Um, once all the trees went in, but the lower part, we're still storing equipment because it's just how this facility is operated. Um, we don't have a lot of room to put all this other stuff, so we've always used that as, as storage. It's gated, we could block it off from anybody being able to get in there if need be. Um, and we do have to sort out the issue of safety of the people that are using the trail system and cutting through there in our facility.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, obviously there's other, you know, access points in, um, and, and really up until very, very recently. Um, you know, obviously over years it was used as a dump and it was essentially vacant land. That only was used either by, if I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, it was really used, um, by the town or, uh, the village DPW. Um, you know, the, what you're, you're saying is now a trail really was the road for equipment to get in and out, am I correct?
Yeah.
Identified as a trail per se, and I think that's kind of where it's, right now, if there's a safety issue because of that.
Yeah, the, the weeds really were suppressed by us driving our equipment back there. It wasn't that it was needed to be mowed, it was just, you know, us driving back in there and storing, uh, stockpiles of stone and dirt and, and whatever else to be put back there. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of, of foot traffic or people walking through there, um, you know, in, is a park. It was, you know, the stray people or the stray homeless person that was setting up a campbacker that we'd have to go over there and bare them out. Um, it's just, it, 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 it wasn't a conducive setting for, for a park, but now that it's turning more into that, um. You know, it, it, it's, it's not necessarily a safe situation.
Yeah, so, oh, yes, Justin?
Um, yeah, I, I very much appreciate it, there are a bunch of different, uh, things going on here, and, and it sounds like, um, I, I wrote this, uh, um. Piece up on the Arboretum, it sounds like from what Zach is saying that a lot of the issues were addressed, it sounds like the, um, erosion issue in the main trail. Uh, coming off of the town trail is addressed, it sounds like the, the weeds are knocked down along that trail, if I understand correctly, um, or, or that's planned.
No, the weeds have not been knocked down along that trail, that's, that's common every year for the trail to kind of overgrow like that. Um, that, that hog, uh, I think it's called hogweed, it's just, it's impossible to knock them back. Um, we don't have the, the, the employee, the staffing to be able to, to concentrate on that area like.
Yeah.
Especially being a person, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, sort of the way this came about, you know, um, there really wasn't a mechanism in place, you know, and now, and so now here we are. So, um, I, I think, again, um, I think the, what Seneca Zoo had identified, I think they thought that the ratio of invasive plants. Um, that have been established there over the years, over decades really, untouched. Um, are the ratio, I think, is ten invasives for every one native. Um, that was the ratio, I think, that they came up with, and I think that'll be part of their feedback. Um, so, I mean, we're really, you know, DPW's kind of up against it, we're all up against it. Um, and, you know, I, I applaud the DPW for really, you know, trying to hang tough and, and do the best that they can, given the circumstances. That, you know, there really was no plan in place or anything factored in, so.
Yeah, this has been a series of, of knee-jerk reactions, but Justin, to ask, answer your question, um, all the. The issues that you stated in, in your email, um, your report, um, we have pretty much sorted out at this point. There's still more weeds that we do have to cut back, and like I said, right now, um, the crew is already doing other stuff, so I can't pull them off of there right now. But Friday, um, I'm hoping that we'll have, uh, at least two people back there, the majority of the day, uh, doing some trimming.
Great, yeah, I haven't been back there since you made some changes, it sounds like you moved some bells around, it sounds like you, you opened the west entrance, did you, on, on top of the hill?
Yeah.
And, and the, uh, the, the south one that's closest to the DPW is, is that, that's where the, um, the east side of the, the top of the hill is closed, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, and, and so is that better, and, and you said that's closed off, so that's better delineated, it's basically the eastern half that's considered to be, to be dangerous. Um, is, is what you're saying, okay. So I, I have not seen how, how that was done yet, but it, it, it sounds like it, um, it, it makes more sense based on what we discussed previously. It sounds like, uh, before, when I went up there last time, nothing was really clearly, uh, demarcated. Um, and, uh, I, I think that perhaps that's a good thing because, um, some citizens went up there and, and pulled the weeds. I guess, um, Mayor Plummer, I, I appreciate your comments too about the, uh, Seneca Park Zoo. My understanding from our discussions in the spring was that they were going to do weeding, um, not just the, the mapping of the invasives, but also weeding and mulching. Um, and my understanding was that some of our plans were contingent on that happening. Um, and what, what I heard instead is that some, some residents, uh, actually went up there and, and pulled quite a few weeds. Um, which allowed the, the trees to, to thrive, so, um, I, I'm glad to hear that their program is back on track now, that's, that's really wonderful, and I think these trees could use some mulch. I guess at this point, um, I also did add a, a proclamation, just expressing gratitude to the residents who stepped up. I know the DPW is pressed for time, I know that Seneca Park Zoo has other priorities and it sounds like they were delayed. Um, but I, I hope that everyone has gotten a, a chance to, to read that proclamation, thanking the residents who went up there and, and weeded, I don't even know exactly who they are. Um, but we've got a bunch more trees thanks to their efforts, um, so I, I will make a motion at this point to adopt that resolution. Uh, this is the, uh, the resolution, the proclamation of, of, uh, appreciation and gratitude for residents to help care for trees in the Robert, uh, Robert R. Corby. Um, Arboretum and Wildlife Sanctuary, and, um, uh, it's, it's basically just saying thanks, it doesn't have any binding strength, it's just appreciation and gratitude, it says.
Uh, Dan?
So there was, um, there was something that circulated by email, somebody said it today, um, of, of regarding your draft, Justin, that, um. Uh, it's a nice draft, and could we also add, um, our, our DPW workers who dropped what they were doing to accommodate this as well, recognize their care as well?
Yeah, I would like to add the DPW, thank you, Dan, and I also would like to add, um, Steve Lauf. Uh, who dropped everything to take a look, um, and move forward, and also I would like to add Scott Harder, our village engineer. Who, uh, they turned on a dime and, uh, assessed the situation and, um. Uh, used their expertise, and, um, and again, thank you also to the DPW, you guys have really, you know, stepped up when you really didn't even know. Uh, what was to be expected, so I'd like to add that, add all of those people, uh, folks into the resolution.
I, I appreciate that, I would make that a, a separate motion, because I think that this is, uh, particularly the, you know, while I do appreciate the efforts of all those individuals. These are the ones who are not on the payroll, um, and, uh, you know, they, they stood up and, and they did a job. And I think that it, there's room to thank everybody, my motion stands, uh, this, this proclamation is to thank the people, uh, who, who stepped up and, and pulled, um. Uh, pulled weeds in, in their spare time without any compensation.
Okay, I, I gotta, I gotta address, I gotta address that, just because somebody gets a paycheck doesn't mean they also don't get a thank you. I, I won't vote for it, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking, I'm speaking. I won't vote for something that does not include, uh, all the other people that were mentioned.
Uh, I, I'm in agreement with Dan, I mean, I think this was really, you know, this is a team effort, this is, and I do thank a, a, all the neighbors and residents as well, but. Um, let me tell you, um, this was, um, to me, a situation that was created out of a very false sense of urgency. Um, and it, it, it really, uh, was highly stressful for our staff who absolutely stepped up. Um, and of course they did their job, and of course they're on the payroll, but they were exceptional in what they did. I would like it amended, I think it's important, and I think we recognize everybody who, who has helped.
I, I think that.
And I would even put in the Seneca Park Zoo Society who literally came out within, as soon as they were called, they came out the next day. This, you know, it, it, it's, this is a good thing. Yes.
It, it is a good thing, and I, I think that all of those people deserve separate, uh, recognition for their efforts, and I would support all of those efforts. Um, I think that this proclamation is drafted, and, uh, my motion stands as, as I presented it.
So you, you won't edit a proclamation based on, based on input, then I'll, then I'll vote no on it, and then I'll propose the exact same. Proclamation with the edits, and hopefully that'll pass. I, I don't understand why you're dying on this hill, I just don't get it.
Well, because it's been drafted, Dan, and. Well, because it's been drafted, Dan, and and I appreciate the other efforts. I think that, you know, these are our separate.
Because it's been drafted?
We don't
Because it's been drafted, we're not gonna change it? Was it written in stone?
Do we need a second to this so that we can discuss it? Cause I will, um, second, I thought, didn't Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Yeah, no, it was seconded. No, we're discuss discussing. I mean, we just talked about a draft just to within a, less than an hour ago, and we
Part of compromises that you you you, the work you do gets changed by the board, and that's part of compromise. If you want to dig your heels in on this, then then I'll vote no.
I I'm a little surprised.
Fully understand.
Have a draft, and um, I mean, I didn't realize when you, when you put this in the packet, that this was cast in concrete and not, you know, that's why we're talking, that's why it's before the board. Um, we have a lot of people who stepped up here in a really, really difficult situation because for whatever reason, the previous mayor made sure that all those trees had to be planted before noon on April fifth, when I took office, God knows why. But the the stress and the pressure on on the DPW, who had to drop everything to do this, they really did step up. And in fact, when the the building inspector, he didn't know anything about it, and he stepped up, you know. This is, this is the truth of how this unfolded, and and then let's recognize everybody and how they all, everybody stepped up on this. I I'm with Dan on this. I think, you know, let's let's really just amend it. I don't know why you would die on this hill, frankly. I don't get it. I really don't. We have good people who work for us. Yes, they're on the payroll, but boy, I cannot tell you all how many times on a daily basis they go above and beyond.
Thank you. I I appreciate the discussion on this. I do agree that everyone deserves recognition. I I think that separating the the staff from the volunteers does make sense, and you know, I I don't have another draft. I I think that minor edits are fine. I think that just saying thank you and and moving on to the next draft for the DPW is um, is what I would personally do here. So that's the uh, the motion I made, and I appreciate the discussion.
You're welcome.
Dorothea, yes. We have several people wishing to comment, so would the board entertain that before this motion proceeds? Okay. Ms. Carabris, you should be able to speak.
Okay. Um, if you could, if she is trying to.
Can I just raise my hand and be on? Is that how I do it?
Yes.
Ms. Carabris, we're trying to address you. If you're able to speak to the board now, please.
Yes. Hello, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm June Reeves, representing the Pittsburgh Garden Club. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely, she said. I'm gonna turn mine off, maybe that'll help.
Peggy, we can hear you a little bit better. I don't know if um,
Yeah.
Uh, the other speaker can stand a little closer to the mic.
Oh, all right.
Switch places.
Trustee.
Yeah, switch places.
Thank you for um, the resolution that you suggested because it really did make me and many of the people whom I know personally, who have been out pulling weeds uh, and doing what we can in the arboretum to make it a viable concern. Um, Pittsburgh Garden Club has two proposals that we would like to put before the board tonight. And I think both of them um, are very pertinent to the discussion so far. The first one is um, we would like to donate two hundred dollars to start a fund dedicated to erecting permanent signage for the arboretum. Apparently, someone else has already uh, donated money for that purpose. So we would like to continue that and contribute two hundred dollars towards the signage for the arboretum. Um, I was part of a discussion group with with you, Mayor Plummer. When we talked about the difficulty for people who are walking through the uh, town portion of the park, um, trying to find where the arboretum starts and ends and giving an idea of actually where it is. And so we discussed the need for having proper signage there. Um, so we are don- donating tonight, two hundred dollars towards the fund for designated signage. And we'll be happy to help with um, getting pricing and helping to come up with design if that's helpful. Uh, our second proposal is something that we proposed to the board about three months ago. That was at the June twenty-second board meeting. Uh, and we are wishing, what we would like to do is to launch a project that we have entitled Adopt a Tree. Which will encourage visitors to visit the arboretum and participate in sustaining it for the future. The project would involve the following steps. First, Pittsburgh Garden Club will identify all the new trees and shrubs and attach labels to the wire cages, protecting them. Then we would weed the interior of the cages and mulch as needed. At that point, village residents would be invited to participate in the Adopt a Tree program by simply writing their name on the back of the tree label. It would be explained to them that adopting the tree would involve helping to maintain their tree in a healthy condition. Instructions would be written up to ensure proper care and that no resident would use any kind of weed killer. Uh, so those are our two proposals, and now I'm gonna turn it over now to Peggy. She's the Vice President of Pittsburgh Garden Club, and I know she has something to say um, at this point.
Um, yeah, I I think we're a little past three minutes on this. Can we try to wrap this up? And and thank you so much, June, for your 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 comments and the donation from the club and and your thoughts on this. Um, cause I know, Dorothy, am I correct? We also have a number of other people who would like to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so if we can, we can, Peggy, if you could maybe wrap it up with the last comment quickly, please.
Well, I'm a separate person speaking, so maybe I get at least a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was all part of, part and parcel of the Pittsburgh Garden Club's.
Well, it kinda is, but
Okay.
Um, I would, I would just like to see board action on an endorsement on the part of the board for our Adopt a Tree program so that we can proceed with that. It's um, you know, as far as inviting the public into the um, arboretum, if there's safety issues still involved, and we could wait on inviting the public in. But in the meantime, the garden club could um, do their thing and identify all the trees and shrubs and um, do the weeding that needs to be done. Um, and you know, we're con- contributing our uh, blood, sweat and tears for this, and uh, we hope that you will endorse this. Um, the other thing is that um, just for your information, we are garden club will be meeting at the arboretum for our September meeting. So, I'm very encouraged by what I'm hearing tonight, and I I hope that you will um, endorse our our project. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just would like to say a couple of things. One, um, I know that the Seneca Zoo has gone through, and um, not only they identified invasives, they have also, because so many of the trees were not labeled, they have identified the trees, they've also identified natives. So um, that may not, they probably will make that available, I know they will, to all of us. Um, as I said, they're on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, also, I think that there's, and I have written this to your president, Sue Julian, uh, months ago, that there is a tremendous amount of synergy between the program that the Seneca Zoo is offering and what the Pittsburgh Garden Club would like to do. And um, I would certainly uh, really urge the coordination, and uh, I would expect the coordination between those two entities. I think there is a natural synergy, and uh, the Seneca Zoo Society is a wonderful organization to work with as well. Um, anyway, there was another comment, I think, Dorothy, you said there were some more comments.
Yes, there is. Okay. Mr. Diaz, you should be able to speak.
Hey, uh, thanks very much. So first of all, um, uh, you know, it's really great to hear so much about all these uh, villagers that are willing to chip in to donate their time. Um, I'm, that's really heartening to hear about. Um, I also, in some ways, it also makes me a little concerned, though. The story I'm hearing today is that uh, I I heard the DPW Zach mentioned the word, word, this is a series of knee jerk reactions. Um, I've heard trustees describe this as a situation where where people had to drop everything on a dime and step up in order to make this work, and so uh, it's great we have the volunteers, because it sounds like without them, this wouldn't really succeed, and I want to hear more about what plans were left. Uh, I know that I was there at the last meeting of Bob's uh, tenure as as mayor. And I know that there was uh, money really pushed through despite uh, just to do some remediation, but it wasn't a large amount. Um, I know that there weren't, it didn't get the three quotes that were supposed to be, um, it really just seemed like last minute effort, and and I wonder if, what what else wasn't done, really? I mean, was there a plan for remediation here? It sounds like there wasn't. Was there a site plan? What about state oversight? You know, their drainage uh, requirements, right? Um, I, uh, environmental quality review, right, was supposed to happen. Did any of this happen before the arboretum, before trees were planted? And if not, why? Uh, I wanna know why we're in this position that we rely so heavily on volunteer work to make something happen. Uh, again, really appreciate the volunteers. I think you guys deserve extra um, applause because you're making this happen. But I just don't think we should be in this situation, and so I'd like to hear more about what was done to prepare us. Uh, that's my three minutes, so, thanks.
Thank you, Gabe. Um, Zach, maybe you can speak to, you know, cause I know you guys had to, were planting the trees in terms of you know, the map or a plan or how how that happened, you know.
I believe the plan was mostly in someone's head. Um, I did not see anything on paper, so I can't really speak to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, oh, yes, Steve.
All right, uh, to answer you, Gabe, um, there were the the action that took place on the last day of the the mayor's tenure was questionable. All right, what what was done by the DPW and myself and other people was to ensure that that it would keep the village out of any kind of trouble by stopping an action, remedying what had already occurred, and and then protecting what had been done. Um, to this point, that's what we did, and by keeping the 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 area closed for a while to allow the the area to reestablish, we stayed within the guidelines of stormwater management. Um, the area that is still cordon off to the upper east end is still got some holes in it, it's got debris. Um, I walked it today exclusively throughout. There are eight and ten inch potholes in there. There's uh, weeds that are as tall as I am now already. Um, and to have, you know, what we've done is to basically protect the the village from any liability and to protect the public from any injury. Um, and and I applaud the efforts of the the village and the the management to try and make sure that the action that was taken didn't cause any more harm to the village.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um, Dorothy, Dorothy, is there any other?
Yes, there is. Um, Art Pierce has submitted three comments. I'm in total agreement with trustee's comments regarding the proclamation regarding the special recognition of residents. Why are the board members against two resolutions? Why is trustee Keating dying on this issue? The village employees are appropriately recognized by the public on a regular basis. Why is a directed appreciation public volunteers an issue with a couple of trustees?
I was asked and answered.
Okay, and?
Does anybody feel they need me to answer it again?
I don't see where these questions are happening. Interesting.
Okay.
Is there anyone else? I'm sorry.
Yes, one last one. Gabriel Diaz just also wanted to say big thanks to Zach and Steve, too. I think the volunteers, but just want to make sure that they are also appreciated. And that is, at this time, all the comments I have. I did have a letter from of course, I don't know where I put it, given everything that's going on here at the Pittsburgh Garden Club, but they really reiterated and went through their whole letter. So I don't feel a need to read it unless the board feels differently.
Well, they they, she actually, I believe, pretty much
Pretty much did.
So I thi- I think that really has been covered, so thank you for that.
Um, and Mr. Diaz just popped in and Emily would like to speak as well, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to unmute them. Okay, Ms.
Hi, sorry, I typed in some comments that maybe I'm having technical issues. Um, just going back to like if, like the site plan, so it sounds like there wasn't any environmental review done. Is that something that will be done going forward before we take further action? Um, it seems like the board gives a lot of time and attention to other matters. We have separate committees you know, formed, what what type of uh, I don't know, it's interesting to me that there seems to be a lot of haste around this issue and and not a lot of like thoughtfulness, so curious um, about any type of environmental review that's gonna be done on this site that to my knowledge, used to be a dump site.
Yeah. Yep, um, oh, okay, thank you. Um, Steve, you were you were nodding about something, and and maybe you want to chime in about, you know, cause you know, Steve is is our stormwater representative. He he really is an authority on this. Um, he also understands the, you know, environmental aspects of this as well, so if you could speak to that, I think that would be helpful.
There are, there are numerous aspects to our code that need to be adhered to in order for any more action to be taken up on up under there, and other than safety to remediate and care for the trees on the top. Um, so until a a site plan is done and review is done, stormwater management is done, um, there should be no more action taken on that area until due diligence is done and utilizing Mr. Harder, uh, our engineer to make sure that it falls in line with engineering practices as well as uh, my requirements for stormwater practices. And our requirements under the code for disturbance of a certain amount of of area.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And so that that is what's like, uh, we were also, so it would be a site plan to be developed uh, addressing potential stormwater issues. Uh, we also uh, would have to do, I believe, an LWRP as well, and also a seeker. As part of, that that's the environmental review, if if I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes.
Okay, so those are the components that we really need to nail down, and that's something that I'm hoping that we can do going forward over the winter and 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 be prepared going into next year. Yes, Lily.
Thank you. Um, my my question is then, do we need to accomplish all of these action items prior to any mulching or weeding or any intervention being done by the the zoo zoo committee?
I think Steve can speak to that, but my understanding of that, that is part of the initial, the first remediation, really, of what happened. You know, we're stabilizing that area. Uh, the trees are now, uh, like it or not, I mean, we love native trees, so they're assets of the village. We are gonna try to take care of them. But going forward with anything else going on, if I'm I'm understanding you correctly, Steve, that's where, you know, over the winter, the stewardship committee will be working on uh, seeker site plan review, working with the community. How do we want this to look? What do we do going forward? You know, we have thirteen hundred residents here, and that is a ten acre parcel. And um, I'm delighted that we have a number of residents already engaged, but we we have a much wider group in our community that I I'm sure would love to weigh in on this, and so I I'm seeing this as a process that unfolds uh, you know, in the coming months, and then we we start start in, you know, next year. Yes, Steve.
All right, the the reality of our code is we have a quarter acre threshold, Lily. And as long, as long as we are the DPW and the village is going up and taking care of less than that amount of ground at a single time, it does not create a need to go any further as far as review. But the overall arboretum, the plan for the the size of it and everything, needs to be reviewed um, for that to move forward from what was already accomplished. Alls we're trying to do at this point, as long as we don't um, for that to move forward from what was already accomplished. Alls we're trying to do at this point, as long as we don't disturb a quarter acre is to ensure that the efforts that were already done and the trees that were planted are viable and stay viable and grow.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Dan.
Um, real quick, I this feels like we're getting into workshop territory where we need to talk about all the things that we need to do with this. I I'd really love to just stay on the proclamation.
Yeah, and yeah, and there was a motion, so um and it was seconded and we've had discussion. Lily, did you have one last comment?
It it was, I just wanted a clarification based on what the garden club um proposed to the trustees this evening. Whether the the what Steve explained would be uh a a roadblock to what they're requesting. Yeah, that's the clarification that I needed.
First of all, I think I think that the board needs to see a formal proposal. It it really broken down from the garden club. I'm not prepared to make any decision on that tonight. I think we do need to have more information, and frankly, I would, as I said before, like them to um work. There's some synergy there with the Seneca Park Zoo. So um, I'm not comfortable moving on any anything like that tonight. I'm not. I I think we just need, I would like to see a formal proposal. I think that's only fair. It's ten acres of land. Um, I love the ideas of, you know, they've been wonderful. Um, I do think we can move forward, but I'm not prepared to move on that tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we have a motion before us. Yes, Dorothea.
I have one final comment if the board would like to entertain it.
Okay.
Okay, Jeremy Stein is this, if this has been a dump for decades, can we confirm that is safe for everyone?
That's a good question. Yes. Steve?
The really good question.
Okay, okay.
This this has come up a couple of times um that it's been a dump, and my understanding is that this is used for yard debris. Um, it was not a dump for toxic toxic materials um or a dump in any standard sense. I believe there is um somewhere on file an environmental review that did not turn up um issues of toxicity or something with the with the parcel. So um, I may be wrong on that, and I I can't pull up the other report for you, but my understanding this is this was, you know, where the DPW put yard waste. And and so I'd like to be careful with the term dump, at least based on my understanding.
Okay, um, I I I know Zach would like to speak to that, and then Steve, you may want to weigh in as well after Zach, please.
Yeah, it it's not just yard debris. It's it's construction debris, um spoils from tearing up roads and and sidewalks and whatever else. So there's, you know, just from looking at the surface of it when it was first turned over, uh, we noticed tires, uh corrugated metal pipe, concrete, asphalt. It's it's a mix of a lot of different things. So I I can't really be sure what's but it's not just uh yard debris that would decompose.
And I I believe it was our village engineer who um had recalled um, that when Nazareth College had a huge expansion, um, they were allowed to dump enough quite a bit of their waste there as well. Um, and and Steve, I know you 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 can speak perhaps to that environmental report. Weren't there some records and some? I don't know how complete they were.
Yeah, there there any records that show so far? Didn't show anything as far as toxicity or, you know, in involved in and what Zach said, I think if you look at, if you really do look at the area when it was cleared, the only thing that you really noticed was construction debris, which would not create a toxic environment for anybody. You know, it's there's tires, there's there's uh concrete. I mean, it's concrete trunks are very evident all over it. There's corrugated metal pipes, like you said, so it looks looks to be ultimately construction debris that we do more like fill than any, not like they dump barrels of uh material up there.
Yeah, and I know, um, didn't we, this was a while back, um, we did find that that report and it went up to a certain date, and then I guess there was no more data after that particular date. We couldn't find you know, I don't know whether parts of it were missing, but at least, you know, there's some basic information that was in it.
Correct. I don't remember the exact date, but there was a very detailed record and then all of a sudden
It does. Okay, okay. Alrighty. Yes, Dorothea.
One more comment.
Okay, okay.
Question, uh, Gabriel Diaz, one question of clarification is Lily still liaison to the arboretum? Is so what responsible responsibilities does that entail?
A liaison?
Yep.
There's no liaison that I'm aware of. I mean, we're we're in the early essentially planning stages, what we're going to be doing. And we've just discussed all of this is that, you know, that the site's being stabilized. There's been remediation. Uh, I've identified and brought you up to speed on where the Seneca Park Zoo Society is. Um, we are talking about going back essentially and doing what needs to be done that wasn't done. We need a site plan. We need a stormwater management plan. We need an environmental review. We need to work with our engineer. Uh, we may need to work with a landscape architect. And most importantly, we need to work with all of our residents to make sure that going forward, this is what our community wants to see and how we how we want it laid out. So
Sounds good. Can we can we get back to the to the vote?
That's it. Yes, Zach, one last thing, Zach, and then we'll vote.
Justin, in the future, if you ever want to walk through there with me and we could discuss the stuff on site, just give me a shout. We can do that.
Sounds great.
Save a lot of time here.
Sure. Yeah, no, I I this this has taken a different path than I intended. I I think that you've addressed most of the issues in in my email. Um, and I appreciate that. Uh, I was planning on talking more about the the tangible steps forward in terms of maintenance. Um, I understand there's other site plan. There's other planning that can occur. Um, and that's a different scope than than the one that I thought that we're opening up here, but it's a good discussion anyway.
Okay, so let's call the vote, please.
Okay.
But um, can I, I, it's been a long time since we um made the motion. Is the motion with any changes or the motion is as stands, thanking only the residents?
That's a good question. I've lost context along the way here, but I believe the original motion was just as it stands with no changes.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, and then I'm gonna repropose it with the changes.
Okay, we're ready for. So should I call a, can I call the vote then?
Please call the vote. Yes, thank you.
Trustee Lanfear?
I.
Trustee Lightkin?
I.
Trustee Stetzer?
Um, I.
Trustee Keating?
I then.
Mayor Plummer?
I'll vote I, but um, I'm looking for a motion from Dan uh to.
I I'll make another motion to formally recognize the the staff.
DPW and
DPW.
And Steve and our building inspector. I second that.
And and also our village engineer, please.
Engineer, yes, sorry, Steve Harder. I think uh earlier you proposed adding someone from the from outside the village, and I would like to keep it to just the village. Okay.
Okay.
Have a second there. Did was it seconded? I'm sorry.
Yep, we have the second. We got it. Okay, trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Lightkin?
Like have I.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, I.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, I.
Mayor Plummer?
A very big I.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, village composting options.
Sure, um, yes, I'm just trying to get my my thoughts together. It's been a few hours at this point. We, this board discussed a composting program before. There was a presentation made to the board. Uh, I don't have the exact date in front of me. But uh personally, um, over the last few months, I've been using, uh, our family has been using a composting service where you're able to put your food scraps in five gallon buckets, put it outside. Um, it actually goes beyond just a uh plant waste, but into um things like meat, uh paper plates. And um, it's it's worked out very well, and we've been very happy with the program. Um, I think that the uh the town has been discussing something along these lines to also encourage um the the regular use of composting. Um, and I think that it would be great if we returned our attention to uh this kind of a program. So with the um, with the agenda for this evening, I had included some prices that were uh gathered a few months ago um, from a company called Impact Earth. Um, and I'm just really bringing this uh back to the board for discussion to to see um uh what some initial thoughts are. I I did have uh some thoughts about an initial direction um that I can share as well. Uh, and I'm, I would like to meet with the uh the founder of Impact Earth to um to see what what might be possible outside of the uh the few items on the um, uh, the quote that we're given. So any any initial thoughts about the program or or about the the different options that um that might be interesting?
Yes, Renee.
Um, we've used a composting service as well, and I'm all for it. I've tried to do it myself, and it's just, I don't have time. Uh, so I would love to explore this as a, to see what it would cost for village by composting.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Um, I'll just say I'm a big composter. I've composted for years. I have compost in my yard. Um, I support anything that um is sustainable and uh good practice that way. Um, and by the way, we may want to, how long ago was this was was this presented?
Uh, the dates on the, I think it's a few months ago, um, right before, um, uh, let's see, early, early spring, was it or?
Yeah, so I think it was March. I think it was in March, March.
Yeah, okay, okay. I mean, it was before I took office. That's why, um, so I'm, I'm sure the prices are probably still pretty much in line, then, I would think. We may want to revisit that just to make sure.
I I do have a call in, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Zach.
Uh, I'm just curious how the collection uh would go and how it would end up at the DPW. Is this something that um people would just bring in on their own and dump into totes? And then IE would come through and pick it up weekly? Or I'm I'm not sure how that would.
It doesn't involve the DPW.
Well, it it could, but I I um, there there are options that would work with the DPW, I guess. Personally, what I was thinking is that yeah, um, my my own inclination would be to go with the easiest thing possible um as a pilot program. Um, the cheapest thing possible, I think, would be to have the DPW, you know, we can get a couple of totes and and they, people dump their five gallons into the totes of the DPW building. Um, and then, you know, they they take them and get them composted. We hardly even get order to the farmer's market to bring our buckets there. Um, when that's an option, I think that picking up at the door is is a good option. Impact Earth has a web portal um that allows you to see, you know, what's what's going on. Um, personally, I was thinking maybe something like uh the the village subsidizing a monthly plan. Um, you know, so that it's about a fifteen dollar per month program for um a direct contract with Impact Earth. Um, and they pick up the five gallon buckets and give you compost back periodically. Um, you know, they give you fresh uh clean buckets and and all that kind of stuff. So it's really very, very simple. You just put your bucket out, you know, once a once a week on a certain day. Um, you know, potentially the village could um chip in five dollars and and people pay ten. Um, you know, we could build for um the the amount of people in the village who sign up uh up to a certain limit for the um, the pilot program. So I don't know if that's something that would work with Impact Earth. Um, I was just thinking that doesn't involve Village Hall, really. Um, you know, other than than one uh payment wouldn't involve the DPW and would give people access to all the benefits of the program. Um, but again, just just preliminary thoughts.
I mean, do you see fifteen dollars a month as a price barrier? Because I already know of a number of residents that use this service and love it. I mean, I don't know, I'm I'm just thinking that maybe it's educational, we may get available for people. You know, maybe there's a certain benchmark where they hit a certain number of households using it where they could drop the price because they've hit a certain number. I don't know. I mean, it just to subsidize, I'm not so sure about that. I I really want to be thinking about that.
So just to to clarify, so you would, um, your your own inclination might be to uh to not subsidize it or or?
I just, I really want to consider that. I don't know that I have a direct answer right now. Um.
Can we get in for have Justin follow up with more information about what it would look like before we go too down, too far down the discussion road here? I think we're, we don't know yet what it's going to look like. This is a great discussion. We're all very tired.
Yeah. You have a call in to Robert already, right?
I I do. I've got to call him back. I wanted to bring this to the board, um, you know, just as as a basic informational item. Uh, sounds like there's some interest. I can follow up with him and and discuss what some of the other options might be and and then report back if if that sounds
Yeah.
to everybody else.
Certain households, maybe that they hit that maybe there can be a price reduction, you know? I don't know.
Sure, yeah. And and any other ideas after this? Let me know. This is just informational, so.
No, it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, last item, um, I think.
Nope, you gotta come back to me.
And remember.
Oh, that's right. I, you're right. Um, where are we? Oh, uh, the marijuana uh legislation and just kind of, you know, picking up where we left off from the workshop. And Dorothea, maybe you want to speak to that because we had a couple of different action items that we're working on right now.
Correct. Um, we are, we are looking at, I think part of the, why this is on there, and I'm sorry, I'm fumbling because my mind is shutting down.
Can I kick this off? I've just got a question for Jeff that will send us down in a right direction.
Okay.
Um, Jeff, my question for you is this, if we opted out of both of these um with the intent to, um, and both of these being dispensaries and lounges with uh with the intent to also do a resolution, are we able to craft a resolution at the same time? Or do we have to get signatures on the on a resolution?
For the referendum, you mean?
Yeah, referendum. That's what I meant. I'm sorry, it's late.
I'm I'm not sure of the question. Um, if you opt out of both, the board can do a mandatory referendum on each of those issues.
Great. And so here's then the follow up question. If we can do that, do we have to have a specific plan in place for if that referendum passed? Or can it just be, yes, this is allowed with the idea that we would then go work on it?
So the critical piece is that um, you opt in or out, you opt out and have a referendum, and the referendum says you you should opt in, then you opt in. In terms of the zoning, this is not a permitted use. So it's not zoned yet, so you could then work on the zoning at your leisure.
Okay, and and so and so we we wouldn't have to have that zoning essentially modeled before the referendum.
That's correct.
Okay, then 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 that really solves everything, and it means that we don't have to think of scenarios of where this could go or where this couldn't go. We could just do a referendum saying, should we opt back in or not? And if and if the people choose to opt back in, then we're able to then go through the zoning process and figure it out. The the question I have for you on that, Jeff, is would it be binding then? So imagine that we do go through the referendum process. People say, yes, we do want dispensaries here. Um, we have to figure out the zoning for that. Does that mean then that we have to find a place for it?
No.
Why not?
I mean, because you you may not have a place for it. I mean, that's zoning. That's a different thing than opting. So for instance, you can have, let's, you can have a dry town.
Right.
You you don't have to have, well, you really can't have a dry town because if you have a place that serves food, then they can serve alcohol if they get a license. So, but this is a more specifically um focused use. So if there's no place in the zoning for it, it can't come in. It's just not permitted by zoning. It need a variance.
Okay, so so let me then, let me then recap what you've said, you know, and you tell me if I've got it right. So it is very possible for us as a, as the Board of Trustees to opt out of both dispensaries and lounges at the same time to issue a referendum so that the people can vote on it. And that vote would then be pretty generic. It would be pretty much, do you want to opt back in of dispensaries in one question? The second question would be, do you want to opt back in in lounges? Yes, no?
Yes.
If the people vote yes to one or one or both of those things, then we'll try to go through the zoning process and figure out where to put these things. But we're not bound to do that.
Correct.
Okay. Then I I'm sorry, guys, but that seems like a really reasonable answer because what I heard at the what I heard at the last meeting was we was we don't want to just say no, because if we just say no, then we look like stuffy old Pittsburgh is shutting down everything. We want to say no with the referendum because I think we're all on the same page on this. We want to hear the voice of the people. And so if we say no with a referendum ready to go, that's a really good solution. And, and it gets us out of this. And what Jeff just told us is it gets us out of this whole sort of imagining and trying to put forward. Is it the pickle factory? Is it Talbets? Is it Main Street? What is it? It just removes us from having to worry about that. We could do that during the planning and zoning process.
One of the things that, just to interject very quickly, one comment that it was helpful when Jeff and I were speaking about this a while back. Just because, say, everybody votes, you know, the referendum says, yep, we want to opt back in. It still is not permitted. It's not a permitted use in our village. So that one piece has been decided. And then we have to move forward with all the rest. And I think that's important that just because we say yes, we may want to opt back in. It doesn't, it's not permitted. We have no mechanism yet in our code and that's the work we need to do. And I thought that was really helpful, Jeff, when you put it that way. Yes, Justin.
So I, I have a, a couple of questions about that. I mean, my, my understanding was that if the, the use, if we opt in and we don't have zoning, it would, it would essentially just be able to, you know, somebody could, you know, it, it would not really be effectively controlled. So you're, you're kind of saying that, no, we would actually have to have allowances to, to put it into certain areas. I, I guess that's different than the way that I was looking at it, but it's getting late. So.
Guys, I, I'm, I'm ready to, 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 I don't know if it's make a proposal or Jeff, what's the timeline on this? Because that, this really synthesizes what we've been talking about for a couple of months and really does solve all our problems. It doesn't give us a PR hit. It allows us to hear from the people and it, and it means we don't have to solve today where we would put those things. I get, it just seems like an ideal solution. What do we want to do next?
The timeframe is a date. The timeframe is to set up. And I think you should do it by public hearing, the decision to opt in or opt out. And then if you opt out, you can on the same night do a resolution, sending it to a mandatory referendum. And then, then we will get that timing down later. But you have to do the opt-out by December 31st, 2021.
If you're. Then I'd like to make a, I'm sorry, then I'd like to make a proposal.
Well, we have a, just a couple of hands up first from Lily, then Renee, and then Dorothea.
Was I first?
Yeah, your hand shot right up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I was going to, I was going to mention that I do believe we discussed in our last meeting, a timeline or a possible timeline. And that Dorothea had indicated the optimum date for our public hearing, which would then put us in a position of allowing it to go to referendum because the, the timing was so specific. 14 days before and 65 days after. So I think that using that as our target date, then we would, I think that Dorothea was already identified for us when that public hearing would, would be. So perhaps trustee Keating would like to make his motion based on that date for taking this to a public hearing based on the date that Dorothea has already identified.
You're here. That's what I was going to say.
Yeah. So we kind of back into it, knowing that we're, we're hitting that mark. Is that what I'm understanding?
If, okay, you want me to speak, I can speak. The proposed date I gave the board for a public hearing so we could get through the holidays and then have the vote was December 14th. But the board would need to send it to public hearing by November 9th. But you can't act on that tonight because you don't have the local law prepared. So as much as I'd love you to set a public hearing and get this done and moved along, the timing isn't right. So we really need to get the local law done, get it circulated. And if we're looking to move this so we get past the holidays, so we're not trying to conduct the referendum vote, because it's going to have to be scheduled with the Board of Elections, I would suggest you go to the December 14th date.
Yeah, gives us, gives us that.
I'm a little worried about that. Is that cutting it a little?
Excuse me, you're not recognized. Renee had had her hand up. And then, oh, you, you said your question was answered, Renee?
I was about the date and I have November 1st written on here as a target for having that. And has that changed? And so at our last, you wanted five days prior to November 1st to give it 60 days. That's what I had from our last meeting. Is that, now you're saying later?
No, no.
No, no, that's different.
I think there's confusion. No, I think what we were saying is you could have a workshop, you can schedule, you got to at least five days, get the local law in your hands and it's complete. So you can vote on it and set the public hearing. That's where you need that five days. We're not, I'm not so worried about December 31st, Dan, because December 31st, you can pass it up to there and you can have the referendum anytime after that. You just need to get it done before that. If you get too soon, it's going to put it too close in January and I, I don't think that's what you want to do.
Okay. So there is a disadvantage to doing it early, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think we're going to fall squarely in the holiday time. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but given you no less than 10 days, but no more than 60, you're juggling close.
Yep. And, and Jeff, I know you had your hand up and yes.
I'll take it offline with Dorothea. I had a question, but I'll take, it's a question for Dorothea.
Okay.
Okay.
You know how to find me.
All right.
We did have public comment from
Okay.
on this. And it, it's a two-part thing. He said, David Ferris, he has a written letter and he also said, I would like the marijuana law discussion put off to the next meeting when the public can participate, put in the beginning of the meeting items. I would ask that my letter be read at that meeting. This is in the interest of time when the board members and the public are fresh. So I think he's, he's, he's excusing me from reading the letter at this time. I wasn't fresh two hours ago. So I'm, I'm going to hold his correspondence to our next meeting. So there you go. So does the board just want me to, what do you want to do? You want to hold another workshop on this? Because we didn't do anything. We didn't schedule anything with this. So I need to, just so I know what I'm doing.
Okay. Hang on one second. I'm going to go to Justin, then Renee.
Just a quick question about the, the law. So if we're looking at a, a law topped out, I mean, NICOM has suggestions on that. Is, is it something where we would basically just copy and paste that? Or are, are we thinking of something different?
That's, Justin, that's my question for Dorothea.
Yeah, that's where we're gonna.
My question is, what does NICOM say we need to do by way of local law?
I know that's where you're going.
Okay.
Yep. They presented us examples of what the local law should look like. So I'm sure we can pretty much cut and paste and use it as a diagram. So this shouldn't be too painful to put together.
Okay. And Renee?
Says you.
I, I was going to, I don't think we need another workshop. I think we've, we talked at this, about this at length in the last few meetings. And I think we're all clear that we, we would like to propose a referendum and that's the direction that we're heading. And can we prepare, can we work on it and prepare it for our next meeting? Or is that going to be too early? If we start working on the, the language of the local law that we'd like to propose.
Yeah. Okay, Jeff, yes.
Yes, we can have ready for the next meeting, provided they have something that we can plagiarize.
Snap.
Inspiration from, a template.
Inspiration.
It's a template.
Template.
Template, right. Yeah. I mean, I think, I think really then the direction tonight, if I'm understanding the board, we would like to direct our legal counsel to draft the, the, what's the, the Russell, well, the legislation and the legislation. I'll leave it at that.
All right. I got it.
He's on it.
And, and accompany, can I, can I go one step further with that? Accompanying that is sort of a bulleted timeline. We have to do this by this date, this by this date, just something in writing. We've been talking about it a lot, but put it down on paper so we know who's doing what.
Visual aid help. Absolutely. Yep. Okay. So, so we're, we're good with that.
Justin has one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Justin. I didn't see.
Yeah, I, I just, maybe this question can't be answered. It sounds like, you know, I've seen the NICOM local law. I think that seems reasonable. It's going to work out pretty well. I, I'm wondering if we think that the referendum is kind of decoupled from that. Are these two separate considerations? Or is the local law also integrating the, the referendum? I guess to me, you know, I expressed an opinion at the last meeting that I, I'm still, my preference would be not to do the mandatory referendum and allow people to, to do it optionally. The, the major sticking point for me is, is having the local law that opts out. It seems like that's the, the first stage. And I'm open for discussion in the other part. I, I just wanted to know if we, if we think these are coupled or decoupled for consideration later.
Well, why don't we have that discussion when we receive, you know, the, the, the material from our attorney and, you know, bring it back to the board?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, Dan, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry.
It, it, it doesn't matter, but we, we just have a very differing opinion on this.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Okay. So we, we've got the action item nailed down here. Thank you. And then we're going to return back to Dorothea. Oh, yes, Jeff.
You know what I'm going to ask? Since I had no part in really the, the, that policy or anything, do you, do you need me anymore?
Boy, I'm so.
Do we need him for the executive session at the end?
There's, there's, there's only an exec, executive session if you want one. You don't.
Well, there's nothing scheduled at all. I mean, I, I think we're just returning back to, you know, Dorothea was going to just do the, it's so late.
Not, not that I don't want to stay. But.
What do you mean?
He's begging.
I know. I'm, I'm sensing a little.
No, I just think it's, you know, I've already, I've already been on your clock for, you know, well over three and a half hours.
Well, we've received some tremendous counsel from you. So thank you. Yeah. I, I mean, I, anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, I think, you know, Dorothea's, we also sent out that revision. Yes, Zach?
Do you need me anywhere tonight?
No, we're good. We're good. Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Zach.
Night.
Wait, are we releasing Jeff too?
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night.
Appreciate it too. Well done. Thank you.
I'll talk to you at lunch.
Okay. Every time Dorothea has lunch, Jeff calls. So that's the joke. Okay.
Yeah, he's got a camera. You have two proposals for the vaccination policy. As I sent out an email earlier, Mayor Plummer requested a adjusted policy with the labor, labor attorney. It's, you can go with one, you can go with the other. One, the change with the new one is requiring testing. If a person opts out from getting vaccinated, they will be required to test on a weekly basis. And the cost would be something they would have to incur. And that's pretty much the big gist of that. And includes all our boards and all staff.
Yeah. I mean, I think based on the discussions, I think that that is solid ground. We know we're giving our employees the option. You have the option to get vaccinated or you have the option to say, I'll test every week, you know, and follow the protocol. So I think that's, you know, probably based on the feedback that, you know, we've been getting, a, a, a solid way to go. Yes.
So, um, are you recognizing me?
Yes, I did. I said, yes, Dan.
I, I am in favor of the, of the complete masking and testing what you just said, Alisa. But as the solution to a religious or medical exemption, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in support of that as an option. I'm, I'm in support of that as a policy if you get a medical or a religious exemption. Do you see? Those are two very different things.
I see. Okay. I see where you're, you're.
That's the, that is, that is how you mitigate if you have one of those exemptions. You don't just get to decide, oh, no, I don't want to.
Okay, I understand. Okay. Yes, Justin.
I, I appreciate the, the additional policy that we were sent today. My, my understanding is that that would not require max, that would not require vaccination to physically enter Village Hall. If someone opts out, they would have the option of masking and testing weekly at their own expense. There may even be free options if, if people look for those. I think that given that, you know, this, this situation is quickly evolving. I, I don't think that a lot of other local municipalities have set very strict policies regarding vaccination. They may do so in the future, but I, I think that if we are pioneers in this right now, you know, we may be in a situation where we're losing people because of the policy. When, when all of us might be setting more strict policies in the future. I mean, I, I think that when there's more county guidance, when there's other, you know, more of a standard direction in, in terms of vaccination, I think that, that option is on the table. But I think that right now the incremental step and ensuring that we're adhering to masking policies, that kind of thing is, is a very sensible thing to do.
I, I couldn't just, I couldn't disagree more. This is a public health emergency that, that there's, there's no time to wait. This is the health of the people who sit in the same room with somebody who's unvaccinated. This is, this is not just, you know, zoning law. This is, this is people's health. And, and I, all the data is out there. We don't need to learn anything else from anybody else that it is time to get vaccinated and, and, and how much we're putting our fellow workers at risk. This is not, this is not just something to study that we need, you know, a traffic study on a street so that we can gather some information. These are, this is life and death. And now is the time to have integrity and stand up and make a decision.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes, Steve. Yeah. And thanks. I know it's been a long night for you and you really wanted to speak to this.
I want to say, before, before we go to Steve, I, I, I just want to make sure, like, we'll do this during, during. This is not a debate between us and Steve. Okay. Steve is an employee of, of the office.
Man, I was legally recognized by the mayor. Respect.
Yeah. Please, please, Dan, you know, let, let.
Okay. And Alisa, I'm directing this to you. This is not a discussion between Steve and the board.
No, I understand.
If Steve wants to make a comment, he can do it the same way anybody else who's an attendee can.
We're going to take public comments.
But, but let's have the board talk about this first.
Oh, okay.
We're not a public comment.
I didn't realize there were other board members hands up. I didn't see any. I did not see any. So is there any other comment from the board? I, I would agree with that with Dan. If there is a comment from the board, Steve, excuse me before you speak. Yes. Okay, Lily, there we go. Okay.
I, I would just forgive me because I, I'm reading both of them. I just want to be very clear that I understand the second option. And the second option does not mandate vaccinations. Is that correct? One mandate says, yes, absolutely. Second mandates, it's second option is that it's not required in order to keep their employment. It is, there are other options, masking and that's testing every week. These are alternatives to the vaccination. Do I understand that?
Yes, yes, that, that, that in short is true. And, but what it does and what, what is the discerning aspect of this? Is that the option given to any employee is they choose at this point whether to be vaccinated or not. If they choose to not be vaccinated at this point, then yes, they incur the expense of their choice. The village does not pay for their testing, pay for any of it. They, they take that responsibility of their choice. And because, Dorothea, if you could just very quickly give rough numbers, remember, we, we kind of went through the numbers very quickly with the number of unvaccinated people that, that we know are working currently, what it would be roughly on a monthly basis? If, if we were to incur that expense?
Yes. If we incurred the expense, it runs about $500 if. Yes, if we incurred the expense, it runs about $500 if we had in onsite testing and I conducted the test with the rapid.
Okay, and if, if it's all.
If it's offsite, it's offsite, it's well over $1,000 because we have to cover their time and the testing. So that's a huge expense for us.
Not even budgeted.
Not budgeted. So if we give them the option, then they're incurring that expense. Therefore, that takes it, makes it more payable for the village.
Okay, my, my. In other words, we, we, you know, we, we, we respect the rights of everybody and we also understand that we have fiduciary responsibility in addition to the public health and public safety. So this is the second option of how to handle this. Okay?
And there's a third, can I?
Yeah, no, and then Dan, you're right. You came up with the third option. Just restate that again, because I think that's important too, and I appreciate you doing that.
My general feeling is that if they get a religious or medical exemption, then the clause kicks in that says what their mediation is. Their remediation, which is the mask at all times and paying for weekly testing. It's a very different thing than just saying you get to choose whether you get vaccinated or not, for whatever reason you want. So if, if you wanna show a medical or a religious reason, then do that. But otherwise, we're, we're just saying, oh, you, you can decide. And that puts everybody else, that would be, that would be fine if it just affected the person. But it doesn't just affect the person, it affects everybody around that person.
No, you're absolutely right. The, the consequences are farther reaching than just one person. Absolutely. And, but also you're making the decision, certainly, well, the medical exemption is what it is, if that's what it would be, but you're also making the decision based on religious grounds, and that's also another aspect of a personal decision.
So I'd, I'd actually like to amend that. I feel like if, if there is a medical exemption, then we should pay for the testing. They shouldn't have to bear the cost of that if they have a, a medical reason. If it's a religious one, that's, that's a choice.
Okay, so again, so there is the possibility then that we would be paying between $6,000 to $12,000 unbudgeted potentially. Just, just, you know, again.
If there are medical.
Different levels of response, excuse me, to finish my thought. We have different levels of responsibility. Or different types. You know, obviously, clearly, public health, public safety, and also fiduciary. So we have to consider both.
Yeah, it, and it's just, if there are medical exemptions, which we're not hearing that there are any, then that's not their fault.
No, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I don't, I don't, you know, I see where you're going with that. Yes, Justin.
My, my preference would be to, I, I already expressed my preference about which one of the policies in front of us. I am concerned about going off in a third direction without our council having vetted the, the option. I think that especially in terms of differentiating between exemption types, whether they're medical or religious. It seems like that might really get us in hot water, so I, I would be pretty uncomfortable with that tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sort of of the same mind with that too, Justin. Yeah, and Dorothy, do we have people also weighing in as well? Steve, yes, we're gonna get, get you one sec.
No, we do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure on that. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I mean, so if you're saying, hey, let's run it by a lawyer to look at the additional language, sure, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable doing that, you know, because we are changing it up, and it's an important distinction.
You're absolutely right, Justin. Yeah.
All right, first off, I wanna say thank you for coming up with another option. I, I think that's a reasonable choice to, to allow people their beliefs and, and to have other options. I think life is about options and catering to everybody or, or trying to keep everybody safe and allowing other people their rights. Secondly, Dan, in, in regards to your thing, and I'm glad you guys are going to council because a ruling came out today from New York State and, and law in regards to religious exemptions. So you might wanna be very careful with how you word and, and process this. So, and it's a bottom line. I, I appreciate the fact that you came up with options rather than one or none. So I wanna say thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, and thanks for your comments, and, you know, we, we, we know you, you feel strongly about this, and I'm sure our residents do, and I think every board member here feels strongly about this. We want everybody to be safe. We want everybody to be protected, and we wanna get on the other side of this. So I think then the action item, if I'm understanding this, is for now, we are, we, we need to speak with legal counsel about this third option. Is this what I'm hearing, or is there a motion, or where are we going with this? Justin?
Can, to, to be clear, I, I think that the third option is still requiring vaccination, and I, I don't think that that is, my, my personal opinion is that that's not justified at this point. I, I would go to the option that was presented to us by our council today, which we've, we've gone over.
So we certainly, you know, and the, and the other thing too, and, and Dan, you raised a really good point. This situation is so dynamic, and Justin, I think you spoke to that as well. What we're doing today may be amended in the future. We, we, you know, we have a starting point. We know we have to do something to protect everybody. And we can always revisit this at any point in time, if I'm understanding what, what we're all, kind of where we're going with this. Okay, Dorothy, did you have your hand up?
I did.
You did, okay.
Just quick question, comment from the public. Jeremy Stein commented, for what it's worth, 100% agree with trustee Keating. So I just pass that on. All right.
Okay, so we need to take some kind of action. One of the options would be to take this third option back. The other option is somebody makes a motion for something. Yes, Dan?
Okay, so I, I would actually propose a couple of things. One of them is that we go back to the lawyers and ask them to include this language and how that would all work. But, but the motion I wanna, so that's not really a motion. That's just, hey, let's
Action.
Give, give the lawyer a call. The motion I wanna make, though, is effective immediately. All unvaccinated people who enter Village Hall must wear a mask at all times. Period.
That is, just to speak, Dan, that is the policy, well.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. Let me, let me step back. If you're, actually, all staff stays, wears mask when we're within six feet of each other. That is the policy right now.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm, right, and what I'm saying is, that's, that's not the policy that I'm proposing. Because I've, I've walked into Village Hall too many times and seen people without masks on, okay? If you are not vaccinated, you wear a mask at all times in Village Hall. It's two close quarters.
Okay.
That's, so I, I make a motion that we in, enforce that, enact that policy.
Okay, well, there's a motion that's just been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay, and then, let's see, Steve, you had your hand up. Justin, you had your hand up, I think.
It's not CDC or World Health Organization policy.
Thanks for your input.
You're, you're doing something as long as you're social distancing. That's the CDC policy, the state policy, and the federal policy, as long as you're social distancing. I mean, I'll do whatever I need to do based on whatever the board of trustees, but you're being more restrictive than even what the CDC and the medical experts are recommending, Dan.
Steve, uh, Steve. You called me out by name, so I'm going to respond to it.
Let me finish speaking. All right. The science states that everybody carries. So if you're gonna do it, it's not only unvaccinated, it's every person in that, that hall. Every single person. The science states truthfully that we all vaccinated and unvaccinated carry and can transmit. So if you're gonna make the policy, the policy has to be village-wide or, or building-wide for every people that enter the door. Otherwise, you're segregating and discriminating.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, and Justin, like, and then Dan.
He, he addressed me directly. I'm, I'm going to respond to that. I don't think somebody else should get to go.
Okay, okay, excuse me one second. So Justin, would you just hold for one second, and Dan will respond directly?
Yeah, so, um, so thanks for your input, Steve. I completely disagree.
Your choice.
Yeah, I, and again, it is all about choice and.
No, it's not about choice.
Well, hang on.
Absolutely not about choice.
Hang on, and what we, what we choose as a board, if I could finish my sentence, please, and what we choose as a board may or may not be what the CDC says. We may actually want something more restrictive because of the work environment here. That's all. I mean, this board has the, the right and the, the option to do that, because again, it goes back to public health and safety for everybody. Yes, Justin?
Thank you very much. This, this is definitely a very important discussion, even if it's almost midnight, so this is, this is what we get paid the big bucks for, right? I, I, I agree with Dan. I think that we should have a, a masking policy that applies to all employees in Village Hall. I think that we should go further than that. My, my suggested amendment would be that we also cover vehicles, village-owned vehicles, while, while on the job, as well as at other sites in the village while working. So if employees have to go into other businesses, I, I think it would be good to, to add those as well to a masking policy. This would be my suggestion.
Okay, Dan?
Okay, I agree with you, Justin. I, I do just wanna, it's all unvaccinated employees. So if, if two vaccinated people are in a truck, that's okay. And if two vaccinated people are in the office, and they're the only two people in the office, that's okay. It's the unvaccinated who have to wear.
Okay, sure. Excuse me, and then Dorothea, and then, yeah.
Okay, we do have public comment, but I wanna weigh in because.
Yes, I, I would appreciate that. You work here too, just as Steve does.
Really quick, the policy we have right now in effect is the following. Anybody entering Village Hall has to have on a mask. Employees have to have on a mask if, if, if they're within six feet of each other. If we're gonna do a policy, and Dan, I understand where you're going, I would agree that everybody needs to be masked. That way, it's just simple. It's very simple, I understand, but I don't wanna call out anybody. The DPW giving to their jobs, I agree if they're in the trucks, they should have masks on. If they're out in the field and they're six feet apart, I think it's important for them not to have, be able to, they can not have that mask on because some of their jobs are very laborious. The mask does
Interfere.
Interfere. So we do have to give them that allowance. But whatever we do with the hall, let's treat everybody the same. That's all I'm saying, because as a supervisor, whatever, that makes my job easier. That's all I'm gonna share, but we do have, now I have three comments waiting. This is gonna be a hot eye.
I wanna address what Dorothea just said there. I, I don't agree with that, cuz I think you've removed the incentive to go get a vaccine. I, I, I think by making it, everybody, everybody has to wear one, you have no incentive to go get a, a vaccine. The, the incentive is you get to take your mask off at work, and you get to live. That's the other.
Well, everybody at DPW is fully vaccinated at this point. I believe, I believe the one person just got their last shot. So they're all vaxxed. They're all vaxxed. Yeah. Dorothy, there were comments?
There's comments. Okay, Mr. Diaz commented that what Dan is proposing regarding masks is already adopted policy at both U of R and RIT from the CDC website. Unvaccinated people remain the greatest concern, the greatest risk of transmission is among unvaccinated people who are much more likely to get infected and therefore transmit the virus, and he gave us a link and follows up with, they provide scientific references at this link. So that's all your public comments at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Gabe. Oh, okay, that was the only one. And I'm sorry, Justin, you had your hand up?
Oh, just a clarification on the policy. I was wondering if there's any provision for mask breaks or, or anything like that. I know our kids deal with that at school, so.
No, we did not cover that.
In particularly in, in the, if there's a revised policy for more stringent masking, I just wondered how people are gonna eat and that kind of stuff, I guess.
Well, you've been eating distanced. Right, Dorothea?
Yeah, I, I mean, to be honest, I don't take lunch 90% of the time. I eat at my desk, so, you know. Currently, what I do is I eat at my desk. If I leave my desk, I put on my mask. And unless I'm in an environment with another unvaccinated person, we both agree it's okay to unmask. But that's my policy for myself. We, when I greet anybody at the counter, whether they're, you know, we don't ask for vaccinated status anymore given the way the transmission is going. We wear a mask. We ask they wear a mask. We also ask that they check in, take their temperature, give us their information in case we have a breakout in the office, so we can contact people. It, not that I wanna put this discussion off, we are heading, I mean, well past 12 hours into 15. I know everybody else has had a long, exhausting day. We need to do something, and, you know, whether it's a more stringent masking policy until we can talk to the lawyers and bring this back to another meeting, can we make a decision here?
What I proposed. So that, that's what I proposed, and Justin seconded it.
Okay, are we ready to go for a roll call vote on that, or what are we looking to do?
Well, hang on, Justin, yes.
Just to be, to be clear here in terms of the policy, so are, are we also saying in, in vehicles, mask? If you're not vaccinated and you're in a, a village-owned vehicle, you're masking. Is that the understanding?
If you're unvaccinated.
All right, good. So we're on the same page. And then on, at other, while on work inside of other buildings, so inside of commercial buildings, is the expectation that if you're not vaccinated, then you're masked?
Yes, you should be.
Okay, okay, great. And, and then the third thing, it seems like the policy that we've constructed doesn't allow people to eat in Village Hall. So I would like to propose that if, you know, during, for, for period, for purposes of, of eating, drinking, as long as people are socially distanced, then, then those are exemptions to this policy, unless somebody's got a different idea. Okay.
Yeah, thanks for adding that. That's a good point, cuz I don't even know if it was in the last one, was it?
No.
Sure. Yeah, no, that's good. So it's, it's clearer.
We don't wanna starve anybody.
Yep. Okay, we're good?
All right, ready for a roll call?
I'm thinking we are.
Thank God.
I'm ready.
Trustee Lakeb. Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Limpier.
Aye.
Motion passes, so I'm gonna.
Forgot Mayor Plummer.
I'm too darn tired. Mayor Plummer?
Yeah, aye.
I was happy a motion passed. I'm gonna guess then, we're gonna go back to the Labor Attorney, look at our other options. We'll bring this back at the September 28th meeting. I'm also gonna ask the board for that meeting. If you have any agenda items, we are gonna be at NICOM next week. Please think of them and send them to me early, because, you know, working on the agenda and the package can be a little difficult, since I'll be out of the office. And I had, are we ready for me to continue on?
Okay. You have more?
I have more. The last two are gonna be pretty quick. I just wanna inform you, we have New York State Deferred Comp. In the past, I write a check and send it to them and tally what the employee owes. Now they have this system similar to New York State Retirement, where they can take it directly from our bank accounts with the submittals. So I'm just informing you that that's gonna start taking place, because you should know who's entering Village accounts. And typically, that has always been only the retirement system, but they have authorized the deferred comp to go ahead and do that. Cuz it's the state pop, the state's deferred comp, just so you're aware. And I included the information about that. Yeah, so. And the last thing, I wanna go over really quick. I'm gonna have more information as this is going on. It has to do with our legal postings. I received notification and I informed the mayor today, and I'm working with Turner on this to find solutions. The several posts have been dis- will be ceasing publication as of October 24th. And one of them is Brighton-Pisford Airport, East Rochester, Henrietta Post. So the paper we post our legal notices in is not gonna be available. The options are the DNC, and we're trying to find out if Penny Saver does it. Some of the concerns are, you know, it's getting very difficult to find newspapers that are actually not digitized, and if we have to have a printed newspaper for notifications. As I stated in the past, going with the DNC is very expensive. Trying to get an estimate of cost today, they really can't even give it to me until, unless I give them a legal posting. So.
It could be about $600 per posting.
Yeah, that is what we have found on a couple of them, so that would be very crippling. So I'm talking with NICOM and everybody, so I hope to have more information as it's coming. So I'm talking with NICOM and everybody, so I hope to have more information as it's coming. So if anybody else has any ideas, I'm hoping that there be other types of inform, ways to relay legal notices to the public.
Yeah, right now our code specifies the local paper. Yes, Steve?
Yeah.
That, that's one of the, the reasons why it's so important to deal with the code issues because we could modify the code to require less things to have to be noticed to, to public hearing. Via the code, and which will save the village time and money.
But, yeah, thank you for that. Yeah.
But that is something coming down the pike.
Yes, coming down the pike. And also, you know, we will be at NICOM and maybe we can get some additional information.
Yeah.
Take a look at other people, other codes from municipalities. Because we have, you know, mayors are, uh, gonna be there from all over and clerks. And so it is an opportunity maybe for us to, you know, really do some good information gathering. What else, Dorothy? Is that it?
That's it. Uh, I just had a public comment and I'm thinking it's just me, but I'll share it. Try Rochester Business Journal in the city newspaper. I have, I want to make sure if it's, it's the circulation. So I have to review that as well.
Yeah. No, but, but thanks for those suggestions. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. I appreciate all thoughts in this matter.
Okay, great. So, um, I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Everybody?
Second.
Uh, Dan's waving his hand.
Uh, member items.
Oh, did we?
No.
Okay, so we have to vote now, but we can all vote no because we didn't do the member items, right?
What, what are we?
Because you made the motion and I seconded, so we have to carry out the vote.
We can, we can discuss and then
Okay.
Say a member item.
During the discussion, member items. I just, one, one thing I want to make sure of, and I assume, can I go?
Yes.
Okay. It was in the, um, there was, there was something left out in the, um, sort of rules of meetings in the public comment rule. And it was a, it was an item that Justin brought up the last time and I wanted to make sure it was included. And I, and you guys covered this before I got to the meeting. So it was the one about step to the front of the, uh, if able. So that was not in the draft. Did you guys add that during your?
We didn't adopt it. We're taking it back to work on it.
Okay, we're getting it back to work on it, nevermind then.
Yeah, we're still working.
The other thing, uh, that's not too important. Uh, the other thing is just the, the typical 75 Monroe conversation of, uh, hoping that, um, we can keep momentum and, um, sit down and directly work with the developer.
Yeah, and, um, I, just on, on that very quick note, um, I believe the PCBA is setting up a meeting. It'll be the first meeting that they'll have with the developer to review the, their sketch plans. You know, we did talk about bringing this back for public comment. I think potentially the design's moving along, you know, with, through the HPB. And then once the PCBA takes a look. So we may have an opportunity then to bring something that's a little more meaningful for public review and comment. Okay?
I, I would add, I believe they're meeting with the PCBA on Monday.
Yeah. Oh, okay, great. I wasn't, wasn't quite sure what the date was. Thank you. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
Second, second, second. It was seconded already by Renee.
It was heard it at this point.
Okay. All right, roll call. Trustee Lightkin.
Hi.
Trustee Stetzer.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lempier.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.[1780.11]